All right, it is six oh three P M. And I'd like to call the committee meeting to order. Dr. Ober.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening and welcome, members of our Board of Directors, administration that is in attendance, and also the community members that are here with us tonight. I have three items for committee agenda. Before I do, though, just want to take a moment, a P S A, I would, I guess you'd call it, about our upcoming High School Musical. High School Musical this year is Gods and Dolls. It will run from Thursday, March sixth, through Sunday, March ninth. Tickets are now available. There is a Facebook posting of it. There's an, a news feed on our website, and I believe there's one other place. But there's a Q R code that you can purchase the tickets. Students are five dollars for tickets, and adults are ten dollars. So thank you for indulging me on that. So I put it out there. So first, tonight, recently, P D has come in to do an audit of our vocational agricultural department. This is something that occurs every five years. And not only did they complete the audit, but it was a very, very successful audit. So today, Ms. Renee Kim Brusie, who is our agricultural teacher and also an F F A advisor, is here tonight to discuss that audit. We've talked a little bit about here, as well as share some updates. I know we have someone else with us tonight here, too, and then talk about what's going on in our C T U program. So with that, Ms. Kim Brusie.
Hi, and happy National Easter Day Week, which is why we brought three. So our chapter president, Ally Hoover, is with me tonight. So we're celebrating National Easter Day Week, so it's a great time for us to be here, too. So I was asked to come a little bit and talk about what is going on with career and technical education here at McGuffey High School. I'm Renee Kim Brusie. I've been the teacher here for sixteen years. So I actually had the pleasure of teaching my cohort, my cooperating teacher, John Lazier, when he was in school for junior and senior year. And now also Andrew Valentine is in our, in our department. So we have three approved programs in career and technical education at McGuffey. One of those is engineering technology and technicians, ag mechanics, and general agriculture. I primarily teach general agriculture. John primarily teaches agriculture mechanics and his engineering technology and then that program. We have a number of 132, and I get one student assessment per day. So those are just our numbers. They're pretty big. They're growing program. We're one of the largest programs in current, like, in a house in a comprehensive high school in Western. So there's a couple of things that, as a board, I'm not sure that you're just aware of, and I kind of wanted to make you aware of as we're going through our auditing program. And one of our audit, and I'm going to review with you an audit, we have some things that we have to do yearly and every five years, just to keep, keep compliance with the Department of Education. One of those is a yearly program revision that goes into an electronic system called CATS. And it's a lot of upload of things, like our community partnerships, and our courses, and our course scope and sequences. What are we teaching? How many students do we have for, that are going to be in that program in another year? And all of those types of data. We upload those each and every year to give a good reflection of what we're doing at the school. We do not the exam, just like the Western area does, for our students in all three programs. We program what they're taking, how many courses they have, completion of the program, which dictates how much our funding we receive and act to it. So every five years, our program's audited, which is why we're here. They do a program evaluation. And we got that evaluating back, which is what I'm here to report on today. But just to give you an idea of what we have to do. We receive funding. This is our federal funding balances. So the secondary career and technical education subsidy that came back for twenty-four, twenty-five school years, 189,800 dollars. This number, that's the amount of money that came back for our program. This year, we are projected, or our proposed number, is 101,722. And that's a refund, or reimbursement, for our students that are in our program. So just kind of understanding where, I know you guys see our budget, and you see how much money we do spend under our program. We do get some of that, a lot of that reimbursed in our numbers. So just so you see that. Each year, we apply for a supplemental equipment grant. It's the leftover of this money that's actually reimbursed. There's always a little pot of it left over. That money gets divided into programs across the state. We just basically have to apply. As long as you meet the pro, the approved program criteria, you usually will get a generally a portion of this. We haven't received this funding yet. It's the Department of Education. It might take a minute. But we will probably are really looking to get the funding to support that C N C mill. So just some I V about numbers. We had a program evaluation in the fall of 2025, and we completed it with the help of, like, our administrative team. This takes everything from special education, regular education, teachers' guidance, admin, and staff to collect basically an arsenal of information that we're doing what we need to be doing here at McGuffey, and to be in compliance. And we also then completed a two-day in-person evaluation. So they no longer just do, you know, upload your files and review those. They come and talk to us about what we have in those files, what maybe doesn't meet their criteria. They ask for those things right on demand, so you have to be ready. So they come, and then they also review. They walk through our shops, our last bases, and all of those types of things to give us an idea of what we are doing, how could we improve, is their biggest goal. So we had six audit corrections. Three of them are all the same. So my numbers don't match on the top, and I'll talk to you why that happened. In 2017, 18, we had twenty audit corrections. So you can see that we have a lot of growth in this process. We also understand what they're now looking for. These reviews are a little bit more common than they used to be. I got audited my very first year of teaching, and this started, this is now my third audit in, in my, in my teaching career, but prior to that, they didn't audit for twenty or thirty years. So this is kind of the new Department of Ed kind of checks and balances to our programs, especially because we're receiving funding. So this is also dictates whether we can continue to receive that funding. So the program, we had five things or four things on here. We have student occupational objective forms. They show proof that their student, they're stored in student permanent records. We do keep permanent records, but we found that we get rid of seniors' permanent records after a certain period of time. Well, this is a five-year audit, so they went back five years. So they're looking for students that we did not have current files for. But this is something we are correcting. And then a senior ag student only, or a C T E, that should be C T E student exit survey only, we give a senior survey, not a senior C T E student survey, so they want to see that be more specific to our career and technical education students. And then oddly enough, we have to provide evidence that our shop size is adequate to industry standards, even though when they were here, everyone in our entire state that I've talked to has got audited. This was its correction. They actually want to see that you have industry standard shop sizes and work spaces. So those were two separate, two separate items on the list. And they went, like, if one was industry standard space and size, so they want to review that and just, that's just nothing more also than a motion from our occupational advisory board that they see that that's a good size, which they've met, walked through our shops, and do see adequate, but we still get a little ding there. So, and then we also have to show proof, one of the items we have to show proof of is that all the corrections were made in 1718. So all of those were made, they reviewed them while they were out here. We still have the upload proof that they were, that they were done. So that's kind of where our audit is. We got commended for being one of the most, one of the best comprehensive high school C T E programs in the state. And, you know, recommended that, you know, others that are starting new programs kind of come out and see what we're doing and how we were doing it here. So we thought that was a really good, really good feedback from us. They were really happy when they were here, really happy when they left. And, and like I said, very minimal, very minimal things to show. So I think we did a really great job, and I wanted to share a little bit about that. Is there any questions about that before I move on? Because I'll just go into this stuff. I like to talk about the kids more than I like to talk about anything else. So we have student organizations, just so everybody's aware, actually, and this is kind of newer, maybe newer. T F A and F F A, we're, so our student organizations that we have are required. So we have to have a student organization associated with career and technical education. So F F A is, is the ag programs, and then T F A actually is the engineering program. Required by the state, we had to submit rosters of students, you know, show all of those things, too. So I know it seems like we're always here talking about these organizations. They are a requirement that we have. This is just a little bit on the F F A update. I have an all-girls F F A officer team, so it's always a fun year with all-girls. And Ally being our president, most of them are senior girls, too. We went to national convention, which is something that your board approved. We take the students every other year to national convention. It is public speakers. There's a lot of fun things that they get to do as well. They get private concerts. This year with Megan Maroney, they were very happy. But they also do, like, a trade show. There's a college career fair. We saw Temple Brandon speak. Like, they do a lot of big, big things like that. They had a great time. We had two of our students receive their American, American degrees. Their national degrees, Chad Hoover and Eric Teegarden, received their national degree. So we were there to see them do that. And this is just a few pictures that they put in. We're involved in the holiday gift drive. We did a, we raised, you know, funds. We gathered, collected, and gave out for 126 of our students, or of our family's students, 126 students, case or twelve. So we do this in partnership with Teen Action. That's kind of one of those things that we get to do together. We did fifty families this year. So if you're giving to our toy drive, know that that's where it goes. It comes into F F A, Teen Action, and we kind of distribute from there. And we raised about 2,200 dollars. We have Keystone degree recipients just this January. Unfortunately, it was the day of the snowstorm, so we didn't get to travel, and you all approved that great trip. But we had some of our students that happened to be there, happened to be showing. Their parents put them up over the weekend, so they made great strides to, so that they could be there for their awards. And six of our students made it for those awards. You could do them with Secretary Russell Redding. We do tons of events each year that you guys are approving that we are going to as well, and these are our career development, that's a contest. And they're competing at a county level, but they're going to move on to a state level in June. So we'll be going to Penn State here in June to compete on a state level, potentially a national level then, if we can move on. We, this is just some of our company and community involvement. Mr. Lazier and Mr. Valentine have done a really good job of reaching out to some of our businesses that want to hire our students. Some of them are coming to us saying, hey, we have jobs for them. All of these companies we've done something with. We've sent students there to work. We've toured. They came in and talked to our students, and the list keeps growing. So this list is not comprehensive of everyone that's helping us. We have a local advisory committee that several, maybe even you sit on, our occupational advisory committee, that kind of drive what we're doing in our program and help us out. And a lot of the people that are in these organizations or companies come in and sit, and they give us guidance on what we should be doing in our classroom, what equipment we should be buying, what should we get from a grant. And then they want to employ our kids. So that's really where we're at. And we have tons that would take, and we don't have enough kids for the jobs that there are. Which is, I don't know, it's, it's good, though, that they're coming to us. We've done some community partnership things where we, like, build signs for, this is the Conservation District. They also awarded, Elijah Dale was our Conservation Speaker of the Year last year, and they gave him an award. But we make the centerpieces for that breakfast and kind of do a full together partnership. Mr. Lazier has built this relationship with Dana Brown from the Washington County Business District, where he made all of these trees. He's always doing a yearly project with them now, where they're working on the project. This one they built, we built them here for them. The students did it as, like, a fundraiser, and then those went out into community. They were decorated, and they moved on from there. These are just some of the field trips that our students have won over the last year. Range had us out to do a private well tag tour not very long ago, so that's our pictures on the left. And then they go to all kinds of different industry tours. Also, community partnerships, this is actually, so kudos to Range Resources for being a good partner with us, but they, we build things for them. They do, like, these sheep feeders and little sheep, all kind of things, like Philly, this is the Rain barrels. But their employees come in to actually do these projects with our students. So our students design and develop them. The Range Resources employees and staff in all areas, everything from human relationships to, to bio, their biology. Engineers are in, and they come and help them. So it's a really good opportunity, very informal, that they talk to our students while they're building them. But they're actually built for elementary, to decorate, for the running of the wolves contest. But it's kind of a two-fold project, where they're in and giving us some, like, career talk while they're there and doing it. So it's a really good opportunity for us. And then we represent Range at a lot of things, where we're doing, like, flower bouquets at some of their, like, events, which is just gets us out there and to the community. We did the full landscape of the Conservation District a couple of years ago, last year. And the kids went in, designed, and installed that as well. So just to talk about some of the things that we're doing. And then these are just general shop projects that we've been doing. Our Big Buck Contest went to this little, little nice grave girl, Marley Reese. And she's about as tiny as ever, and the guys were really mad. T F A is, and I'm wishing they were here to talk about it, but is participating in BOTS IQ. It's a combat robotic competition. The robots have to be under fifteen pounds. They also have to find community and company sponsors. These company sponsors this year are Accutrex, Price Brothers Fab, Devon Manufacturing, and I G S was their sponsor last year. And they have to work with those companies. They have to either help them supply materials that they need. They have to do a tour related to, in, related to manufacturing or to something with robotics. And then they also, some of these are cutting fab pieces for us, like Accutrex cut some metal for us and cut some different parts on our robot for this year. Price Boy Fab, which is actually Logan Price, for those of you who might know him, he's a senior. His family owns, and they are sponsoring, and they cut a bunch of metal for that all the time. So students have to do paperwork with the robot, accounting, bill of materials, a safety plan. They have to have a power weapon and a drive system explanations, electronics, electrical schematic, battery safety plan, and then engineering drawings. So they have been doing all the paperwork, and the robot runs all the time. I can vouch for that. These are their field trips that they're related to. So they had a BOTS IQ training. They had a circuit info and soldering training, and then Devon Manufacturing tour. And then we always kind of piggyback and ag goes with engineering. We're kind of like a little family in the wing down there. One goes, the other one goes, it seems like. So we did, we partnered and went with them to BOTS IQ. So this is our current robot. It runs in the hallway after school particularly. And they have fifteen students participating. They were preliminary competition on March fifth, and the finals are on April eleventh and twelfth. And then these are some of the engineering course projects that they do, and they did the flags. They did the twenty-five year flags. And they do all kinds of cool things like that. So, and that's kind of what we're doing. I'm going to take a minute to introduce Ally. I want to stand Ally. At least stand away. Ally is a, Ally. Ally is a senior. She is our chapter president. She was also named the Keystone, Western Region Keystone Star Farmer. And she will be representing as a Penn State in the spring, in the, or in the summer, in June, as a state F F A officer candidate. So we're really excited for Ally's and what she has coming up. But she's also accepted to Penn State for ag education, so she'll be me or her mom someday. So I just wanted to take a minute to introduce her. And I know that you guys received just like a copy of our letter, I think this was in your packet today, for our corrections, just so that you knew, that we would be submitting that. So, and I'll be happy to field any questions or comments.
I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate this. I don't know how, how many people know just how much the students have available to them.
Yeah.
I know, I don't think enough people know. We'll put it that way. So this is really helpful for, not just all of us, but even the public in the community. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you. I am not. I am not. The guy, like, Andrew might be, but I am not. So it's what the mill is. It's not, it's not as big. I know it's definitely smaller. It's more education size based. But I know that they've had a couple of the manufacturing companies that we're working with, like, kind of guide them in that, in that purchase. So hopefully, we'll hopefully get it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for the milk chocolate.
And thanks to Mrs. Ravarnik for initiating. That was awesome.
Again, so tonight, we have our presentation. Much value, who's, I've been sharing this with the board the last two, three months, that we also in a process with the state with our Future Ready Comprehensive Plan. And so tonight, we're going to make a presentation, a very high-level presentation of what is expected, why we do what we do, how long that plan exists for, and what our focus is going to be over the next three years. So, having said that, so what is F R C P? Every three years, all five hundred schools in a district in the, in the Commonwealth have to create a plan, a strategic plan for where they see themselves in the future. They then have to create based on what they see as items of concern, need, growth, objectives, to accomplish that plan. What we have done over the last three and a half months is followed a process that we're going to share with you tonight. And that process includes everything from data collection, to then taking that data and making meaning from it, then taking that data and making meaning of it, and prioritizing our challenges and saying, okay, now how do we, how do we address this? Over the next three years, which is 2025 to 2028, how do we address this? Where are our goals? And they have to be measurable. You have to be able to say, we're going to accomplish X in three years. Then with any goals, if you don't set up strategies, or in this case, what they call action planning, how do you know that you're able to accomplish them? What are the tools that you're going to use to accomplish those tasks? So again, I addressed, what is F R C P and how often? It doesn't seem like it was that long ago. We are still in the middle of our last three-year plan, and this plan here will take us into the next three years. Now, I want to introduce members of the teams, because this truly was a team effort, but it was broken down into two main categories or areas. And I have to start by saying, and you heard this in Renee's conversation with us tonight, that throughout the course of any given school year, there are requirements that are put upon us for that particular year, meaning audits, in this case, the F R C P. There has to be a chunk of time that you all put aside. And now, when I say that, I'm going to share with those that have done this, both from administrative side of things, but also from our spear committee, which I'll share with you. And I'm just, as I stand here, I'm just so very appreciative, because it wasn't like, I was able to say to the advent team behind me, hey, take this off your plate. Right? Need to focus here, so take this off your plate. And then middle school, take this off your plate, and elementary. That's not the case. That's in addition to. That's during the course of the day. That's after-school hours, all those things. So I just want to share that right from the very beginning, of how appreciative I am of this time, because it was very time-consuming, quite honestly. So the, the F R C P team is made up of administrative team, which I just spoke about. You can see the names up here, representing experiences, expertise, different backgrounds. Many of them have gone through a Future Ready Comprehensive Plan. Some have not. It was a learning experience. We see ourselves as colleagues, so any time we have discussions, sometimes we don't always agree. Sometimes there are, there are thoughts that maybe a certain group would, would say, that's where we need to go, and, but we always came to a consensus, and that was the key to this. The plan was put together primarily by this administrative team, but as you're going to see in a minute, it was also in concert with, with help from our spear committee. But as you're going to see in a minute, it was also in concert or with help from our steer committee. And, uh, I will tell you that the steer committee is made up of, we've got the teachers, uh, business leaders, community members, school board member. We also had both Jenny Lentz and Ron Gallagher from IU One. They served in the capacity of any kind of questions we had regarding the plan itself, they were there to address those plans. And these folks, now I gotta tell you too, this is something, when we started this, uh, with the steer committee, there was actually double the number of names you see there. Double. Um, but as we go from November into December, you go through the holidays, we come back in January and then February, attrition happens. Okay, there's some, some folks fall off, some folks I don't hear from, and I get it, I respect that, because I understood that. What we tried to do this year that was a little different from the plan we did just three years ago, was have multiple ways in which our steer committee could engage the plan. Three ways primarily, both onsite, we would have onsite time, I would feed them in the library, try to entice them with food. Uh, two was to do a virtual so that we could all go home, be comfortable, join online. And then third, and this is really the way that we experimented this year, was the first time we've done this, um, we created a parent guardian survey. Because we knew that there was a lot of voices out there that just, again, couldn't make the time to come on site, couldn't make the time to do it virtually. And so we also had a parent guardian survey that was along with this. I don't have the names of all those folks up there, because that was private. But those were the three ways primarily that the steer committee came together. And again, just appreciative of their time. You can see the dates that we met. Uh, for all intents and purposes, this work actually started in October, the planning of it. But for the first time, the advent team met, it was in November. All of these times you see here, the advent team took two, were on site. And this oftentimes is preparing for our time with our steer committee, because we knew the time with our steer committee was precious. We knew, I, I, I clearly did not want to go over two hours, because I didn't want to just suck that time away from them. So a lot of preparation of time before we met with our steer was spent as an advent team, talking about things, working things out. Then again, you can see, one, two, three, four, five times so far, so far. And, uh, I haven't told this to Mrs. Ravarnik, who's our representative, but yeah, one more time coming. I lied the other day. We have one, one more ask. Um, but you'll see in here, just in a little bit, what I'm asking for. Okay, so that's the planning team. Next, let's talk about the key components. So when we talk about the FRCP, what is it that we are doing here? What are we accomplishing here? And what we were asked from PDE was to identify between two and four, what they term priority challenges. You may remember this, because the last few years, uh, every year, we give a presentation of where we are with our FRCP up to date. This year, as you've seen just a minute, we identified again, four priority challenges. Areas that we see looking at the data, both a quantitative data and a qualitative. Quantitative, I mean, we're looking at assessments, we're looking at ways in which local and state assessments are driving us, maybe that our students are achieving. But also we're using qualitative. That's the assessment, those are the meanings that you see there. That's the, the parent guardian survey that you saw there. We take all those data points, and then we come to the point in the plan where we start to say, okay, where do we need to focus over the next three years? Where do we need to have our, our, our resources, our attention focused on? So, this is the ready, set, go plan they have, okay? This is from, uh, PDE. I know, well, actually, I don't do that. There's a lot of steps. Okay, there's a lot of steps that it goes into. The ready section is just what I talked about. That's the, the data collection, that's the, um, looking at what you represent, your school demographics, what you value as an educator, and also it's our mission and vision, which I'm going to share in just a second. The set part of it is where we take all that data and we make meaning from it. So, so what is, what are we seeing here? What, what's being shown? What are those priority challenges that we need to address? And then finally, the go section is just that. It's, think of it as, uh, a funnel. The ready section is all this information being dumped into it. And slowly, over time, through the set section, it starts to funnel out and filter through. And by the time you get to the go, you have exactly what you should be focused on. And that's where we've been for the last, probably, part, better part of six weeks or so. In there, we attach goals to our priority challenges, which I'm going to have administrators here in a minute share. And then we also create action steps or strategies to accomplish those goals, which we're not sharing tonight, because there's a lot of them. But I will tell you something in just a second, that they are visible, just not on this plan right now. So, real quick, this is for the audience too. The audience distinction is always welcome. Three years ago, we created a mission and vision. Your vision is why you exist, and your mission statement is how you accomplish your why. Very self-stated. Vision, why we exist at the school, mission, how you accomplish your why, your vision. Anyone remember, who puts, uh, everyone on the spot here? Because this is really important to all of us, that from top to bottom, bottom to top, we all know what our why is. Why we exist, why we do every day what we do. Our vision. Is there any remembered? It's one sentence. Want to shout it out to the audience? You're, 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 you're not fine. Exactly right. We will ensure all students, and this is very important. Three years ago, we hammered this out, we were having, uh, we're given a chance to do this again, we said, listen, we think we have what we're, we're really focused on. Which is, no matter who you are in a district, we want to help you reach that greatest potential. Whatever it is you want to accomplish, what are we doing to make sure we're helping you do that? That's our why, it's why we exist, help every student reach their potential. Mission is, is the house. All right? So, now that we know that we can find the answer somewhere, let's see who's smart out there. What is our house thing? What is our mission statement? Someone new. Someone new. Name?
Chris Chapman.
Chris? Um, she, were you struck by that, that statement there, the very first line? Was anything stick out to you about Brad's statement yesterday?
Yeah.
Just Brad's statement yesterday? It's not a throwaway line, that's why I'm very young. It's not a throwaway line. For everyone who, who knows, when we look at our plan and we look at our plan moving forward for the next three years, we're looking internally. Are we better today than just yesterday? It's incremental. We're not making huge leaps and bounds, but it's incremental. Are we better to our students better than? We challenge you on these better today than just the, just the day before. Learning from our mistakes, learning in general, right, taking place. Those are two statements. The acronym itself, um, we flagged up before. Okay, this was our plan, our priority challenges that we addressed us three years ago. Three of the four are going to move forward over the next three years. And I'm going to share with you, but you can kind of see where our pre areas were, our focus areas were of the last three years. Here, condensed, condensed, here are our priority challenges for this year. A vision and cul- uh, and culture of higher expectations. Again, we're looking at ways in which we can help our students all across from K L way through twelve. Ways in which we're assessing them, ways we're using those assessments in the classroom, the difference in instruction, AI in education. I'm going to tell you something right now, because in a minute, the administrators are going to share each of these sections with you. AI especially, if we're not addressing the changes in AI in our plan from year to year, we're going to be missing a boat. Because AI is changing right now as I'm standing here. Like what I know, the AI for the way our students are going to be impacted by them in the, in the workforce, but also too, the way our teachers are going to use them are going to change. And so that's my caveat, as you hear the advent team compare and describing to these, that we do have goals for the next three years, but they will change. Because we'll adjust. This is very fluid. Okay? Our regular attendance. This first man team ran out of the pandemic, and attendance was invisible. Not just here in the Commonwealth or, or even at McGuffey, but across the nation. It's still not where we need to be. That's, that's a very, very important point. And finally, not last, but not, and definitely not least, is we know what's going on in education nowadays when it comes to the retainments and recruitment of high-quality staff. Teachers, administrators, everyone. It's very, very difficult to find very good people. And so we have to continue to address that. So, having said that, as I was suggesting before, our administrators have been focused on specific areas. So tonight, uh, the stars you see next to the names, in this case, upper left-hand column, Leah Augustine, who's the elementary principal for us, as well as Dr. Chet Welch, was focused on, uh, high expectations for our students. Staff improvement attention was Dr. Dan Gotrin and Justin Wise, Dr. Gotrin is our curriculum director. Um, and Justin is our assistant principal in Claysville. Bottom right-hand side is regular attendance. We had three individuals working on it. We had Mark Bonus, who's our high school principal. We have Ally Waldo, who is our new, oh, that's still relatively, I use Ally too, by the way. Uh, Allison Waldo, who is our assistant principal at middle school. And Brady Story, who's actually newer, who's our high school assistant principal. And then finally, AI in education, we have Jen Burdine, who's not able to be here this night. We have Mr. Craig McKee, standing in the ground in the back there. And we also have Mr. White, Mike Wilson. Makes a lot of sense, because Mike is our director of technology, because over there on the technology. So, having said that, I'm going to first ask up Dr. Welch, who will take us through very high level, why, the why. It's very important here, the why, this is something that we're going to be focused on for the next three years.
Hello, everyone. Uh, Chet Welch, middle school principal. Uh, so Mrs. Augustine, my, Mrs. Augustine and myself, um, along with, uh, the group and the committee, uh, we focused on, uh, the vision and culture of high expectations. So, kind of to summarize our measurable goal statement, um, there's two scores, uh, that the students get, uh, going through, uh, three through twelve, uh, with PSSAs and Keystone. There's a growth score, a- and then there's their proficient score. So below basic, basic, proficient, advanced. Um, we went through curriculum revisions, uh, in the last FRCP. Uh, so now our curriculum in math, ELA, and science is all aligned to state standards. Uh, so what do we do with that? Uh, so what we're going to do with it is, um, before, uh, we align that as we were going through the process, um, we noticed that our, uh, diagnostic testing and our benchmark testing, it wasn't aligned. So it wasn't aligned between Claysville and Joe Walker. Everyone was giving different kind of assessments, and it was kind of focused more individually. Uh, so we wanted to fix that. And then at the secondary level, um, our content level. So we wanted to make sure we were giving the same assessments as kids were going across the content from middle school, uh, into high school. So with ELA, we were able to track what you're doing in sixth grade all the way up to, uh, your eleventh grade, uh, twelfth grade year. So that's what we came up with for our first, uh, year target. Um, we decided that we will use common benchmarking and diagnostic, diagnostic assessments across grade levels, uh, both the elementary and content, content-tested secondary classes and PSSA and Keystone-tested subjects. So with that, we'd also develop a, uh, testing calendar. So we're not looking to overtest, but we have to get a diagnostic to see where students are at the beginning. And then that will allow us to drive our instruction. So what we're working on next year, for that first year, is to have a calendar, uh, where, um, our teachers and the, the parents and the students will all know when you'll get a benchmark or diagnostic for math, or ELA, or science, and that will be planned out in math. Uh, so that'll allow us to better drive and plan our instruction. So once we get that developed in year one, year two, then we moved on to that individualized instruction. With our individualized instruction and our new curriculum in both math with the Alex program, uh, ELA with WAGL, it allows those students to get their original score, and then it prescribes them a prescription based on where they're at. So if they're below the grade level, it gives them a path, um, with a little bit more remediation. If they're above where they're supposed to be, it gives them more of an accelerated path. Um, so each student will be given their own individualized, uh, path of learning, and, um, that'll be K through twelve. So we'll use the common data to drive individualized instruction across the district to ensure all students show growth academically. We're looking to take you from where you come into a grade, and we're looking to move you to get you and ensure that you grow as you go, go through that grade. So that's year two. And then in year three, we'll use what we did in year one, in year two, to improve our growth and proficiency numbers that meet or exceed the statewide growth average or, or, and proficiency averages for math, ELA, and science. And those are the tested subjects in the state of Pennsylvania, um, both in the elementary and at the secondary level. So to kind of summarize, we're going to start out, we're going to develop that academic testing calendar, so everyone knows, uh, when will be tested. And, um, we're going to have common, commonality between the elementary schools and a developed plan at the secondary level. Once we get that in place, we can have that individualized structure, uh, instruction, and the teachers can review the data, use that data to, uh, drive the instruction to make sure the students are growing. And then lastly, in year three, we should see the results of that in our testing numbers in both growth scores and, uh, proficient and advanced numbers. That's kind of from a high-level quick summary.
I have a question.
Yep.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, in year one, you're going to use, uh, an internally agreed-upon diagnostic tool.
Yes.
To, to determine where they are. In year two, what tool are you going to be using to look at how students are growing according to those benchmarks that you got from the first year?
So it'll be a little bit different in the elementary based on what they use. Um, but in the, at the secondary level, we'll have the, the Alex program, that firefly.
Just internally agreed upon.
Yes.
And then in year three, you're using the PSSA.
Yeah.
And the Keystone.
Yeah.
As a, like a final, I'm trying to be clear.
Yeah, the pro- the problem was, is that we've, not having this unified plan, everyone kind of has their own thing.
Right.
So when you go from one teacher to the next, you kind of start from back from square one.
Well, I will say, year one's probably going to be the hardest.
Yeah.
As far as internally agreed upon, that we're all going to do the same thing.
Yeah.
So that's why I was on, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Justin Wise. I was partnered with Dr. Dan Gotrin. Um, we worked on recruitment and retention of educators. Um, the measurable, measurable goal statement, I'm just going to read it. Um, increase the retention rate of newly hired, highly qualified educators from seventy-one percent to ninety percent over the next four years, while increasing our overall retention rate of all teachers from ninety-three percent to ninety-five percent by implementing targeted professional development, mentorship programs, and competitive compensation strategies. This percentage includes retirement, resignation, and other departures. So in year one, to start, we're going to take a step back and listen. Uh, we'll survey teachers hired over the past five years to see what's working and what's not, when it comes to onboarding and induction. We'll also check in with mid-career and veteran teachers to understand how we can better support them. At the same time, we'll start conducting exit interviews with teachers who decide to leave, giving us insight into why they're moving on. Our goal this year is to retain at least eighty percent of new hires and ninety-three percent of all teachers. In year two, once we have that feedback, we'll put it to work. Updating our onboarding process, refining professional development, and making sure our Act forty-eight offerings are actually meeting teachers' needs. The goal is to retain at least eighty-five percent of new hires and ninety-four percent overall. Year three and beyond, over the next four years, we want to see a major improvement in retention, increasing new teacher retention from seventy-one percent to ninety percent by twenty twenty-eight, and bumping up our overall teacher retention to ninety-five percent. We'll get there by strengthening mentorship, improving professional development, and offering competitive compensation to keep great teachers in our classrooms. As we move to, uh, the next slide, I'm going to again read the measurable goal statement. Increase the retention rate of school leaders from seventy-three percent in twenty twenty-four to ninety percent over the next four years by implementing targeted professional development, mentorship programs, and competitive compensation strategies. This percentage includes retirement, resignation, and other departures as well. Um, in year one, we'll continue our principal academy that began this school year to support new building administrators, while also checking in with current leaders. We'll survey them about what keeps them here and what might make them consider leaving. We'll also look at exit interview data from those who have already moved on. This will help shape the next Act ninety-three agreement, which takes effect in twenty twenty-six. In year two, once that agreement is in place, we'll follow up with administrators to see if it's making a difference. We'll also look at other ways to better support our school leaders, whether it's more professional development, mentorship, or additional resources. Year three and beyond, our goal is to increase school leader retention from seventy-three percent to ninety percent by twenty twenty-eight. Just like with teachers, we're looking at professional. Just like with teachers, we're looking at professional development, mentorship and compensation as key ways to make that happen. When we support our administrators, they can focus on what matters most, helping teachers and students succeed. And that's all I have.
A question.
Yep.
Great job. And I do appreciate it. I am.
Absolutely.
I think these are great goals. I have, my question is going to come back to, what if we discover, because when you're talking about, we, we definitely want to see those numbers, right? So we're saying our goal is to increase from, for example, seventy-one percent to ninety percent retention over the next three years. And I think it's great to look at mentorship programs, competitive compensation though is probably my biggest concern. Because what if we early on discover that the largest reason we're not retaining is based on money? As a district with limited funds, there's only so much we can do. And so we've all, then we're, we're not going to reach that goal of ninety percent if that's the key. So I was just curious.
Two things, and I'll, I'll go back to what I said first. Uh, each of these goals from, from, uh, four priority challenges that you just heard, from year to year, we will look at them and say, are they still available? You know, because again, we're sitting three years out from, from that ending. So that's, that's first and foremost. And secondly, again, um, we're going to look at that and look to see what we can do. Um, share, uh, data with the board when they're looking at the Act ninety-three, share that with comparables with other districts that we would necessarily compete against. Thing that we all recognize is that in Washington County, we're up against Alliant County and, uh, where we've lost many administrators and that number jumps up. You know, so those are discussions that we're looking to have with the board as we get that away.
I really appreciate the fact that you two-pronged it, that you looked at that as well as leadership because I think those are completely different areas and have completely different, um, criteria for why people are leaving or staying. So I, thank you very much. I think that's a great idea.
One, one piece all out there just as well, you heard Mr. Wise note about Title II funds. Um, so every year we get, um, Title II money as far, everyone's familiar with Title I. Um, Title II is professional development kind of focus. But, um, because this retention concern is kind of a Pennsylvania-wide issue, um, there is now some flexibility with Title II that it can, they're calling it the ABCs. It can be used to pay for, um, teacher agency, working conditions and in certain cases, compensation stuff. Um, and there's, there are limitations there, right? We have to, we have to investigate that, but that, that's in there because we, we think that might be one way to help with at least some of the, the compensation piece. So that's, um, not a, not a sure thing at this point, but it's, it's at least one strategy we want to dig further into.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have, uh, our representative, Dan, I forgot to say transportation as well. So I make sure I give you that.
Somebody has to.
A few.
Um, good evening. Mike Wilson, Director of Transportation and Technology. Um, Mrs. Burden was not able to make it with us, uh, or join us this evening. Um, but I do have my trusty sidekick, Mr. McKee, Maintenance, um, Director of, uh, Buildings and Drowns. And he, he's here tonight to really pick up the, tighten up the loose nuts and bolts that I missed throughout our presentation, so. Um, how many people have heard of AI? I think probably just about everybody in the room if I had to guess. Um, one of the things that we, we talked about with, with AI specifically um, is really the reason why, why are we including into artificial intelligence into our, um, comprehensive planning process here? And I think it really comes down to, uh, a few things. Number one, it's, it's not going away. It's, it's here to stay. Um, and whether we like it or not, it's going to have an effect on our lives and our personal lives and our professional lives. Our tools here are going to be affected by, be affected by it. So why not not put something out there that, that we can use as a structure, um, to help guide us through that process? Um, it's important for us to understand, number one. Uh, it's, it's, it's important for us to know how to use it, number two. Um, it's, it's also important to understand what pitfalls might come down the road that we need to avoid in order to continue to use that responsibility, um, responsibly. So, you know, those are the kind of the, the high level, um, need that we saw that why, why we decided that artificial intelligence, intelligence should be part of our comprehensive plan. So, um, if you look through the packet or if you look at the, the screen here, we really have two goal statements. Um, one's related to the, the teaching and, and learning in the classrooms from a, a professional and paraprofessional perspective. Um, the other is related to, to student learning and how that's going to affect, um, that student. And really, again, it's, it's, it's really providing a structure. Artificial intelligence, technology in general, we all know how fast it moves. Um, and so when we, when we put a plan together, it has to be flexible enough where we can, you know, adjust it as we go. Um, strategies a- as we move through this will become more intentional um, and more specific to the students' needs. Um, and really by the end of year three, our target would be for everybody in the school to be able to use this artificial intelligence in our classrooms to, um, promote good learning and teaching throughout. So, um, I'm not going to read it to you specifically. I think you guys have packets here, you can do that on your own. Um, but essentially at the, at a very high level, that's, that's kind of where, where we're talking. I miss anything, Mr. McKee? Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
With the AI that will, um, be integrated, um, I know it happens at the teacher level and then it's introduced to the students, et cetera, et cetera. Will the board be given an opportunity to review the AI tools that are being used prior to them being implemented?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why not. I mean, these are, these are tools and resources that are going to be readily, readily available for, for everybody. Um, and that's something that we'll, we'll talk and, and make sure that we include that in our planning process and integration process and implementation process. So absolutely. I don't see why not.
As part of that process, um, as far as introducing AI specifically in how to apply it, the application of it and apply it in a positive productive manner. Um, anyone who's worked with AI will tell you that, you know, machine learning is only as good as the human who is teaching the machine, right?
Input.
So what process is going to be used or are you, have you discussed the process by which to verify legitimate? Because AI will throw out a lot of hypotheticals, a lot of misinformation to be able to differentiate, is that part of the learning that's going to take place? Being able to differentiate the hypotheticals and the misinformation. I hate that term, but that's really what it is in this case. And, um, and legitimate.
Yeah, I think that's something that we have to prioritize from our perspective in this structure that we're going to develop and in the strategies that we develop for implementation. Um, I think that's a very important piece that, that we have to consider. Um, we don't have anything in, in place currently because we're kind of in the, in the throes of putting it all together. But that's a very good point and that's well taken and that is something that we've discussed to this point.
And then the other question I had was, when you're talking about student application, um, one thing that came to my mind immediately was being able to use it for special education needs. So for example, we have a student who has, for whatever reason, an occupational challenge, right? Physical challenge. Um, there's a lot of AI out there that will translate basically audio to written word. Um, would that be a place where we can look at application of an AI tool?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's something that we looked at. Um, part of this process is going to be, I think, that we're going to have to identify, uh, tools that we can use district-wide for all individuals. And, and that's kind of the unique thing about AI is as you, as it progresses, it can become very, um, very direct and very intentional for specific users, right? And it, and it can be, it can target those, um, students or teachers that, that need specific help in specific areas and tailor that learning and, and teaching, um, for that. And that's, I guess that's.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. And then my third question, final question, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is, um, copilot currently available for, for district employees on your three sixty-five? And are, are they using it or are we going to make that available to students as well or we don't know yet?
Well, um, we haven't specifically talked about that, but it is available. Um, it's a Microsoft product. It's within our package as an edge. And it's, I mean, it's built right into the browsers and everything else.
And all the apps.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I can just add, if you look at the timeline, we were intentional with the first year being introduction to, you know, the AI for the staff, right? So the first part of that plan was, okay, let's, let's get a, a group together. Let's see, you know, there are just so many things out there, right? Then we've got to weed some of those out, right? And you come back and you say, okay, here's, here's the ones we think are applicable to what we want to do. And, you know, we use the term guide rails, uh, in our discussions because we need to get those in place. We can't have, you know, this teacher likes this one, that one likes that one, right? We're, we're going through great pains to standardize our, you know, benchmarks and, and so on in the other areas. Uh, we want to do the same thing here. We want to make sure that we're deliberate with what we're doing. We want to make sure that we're including all the staff uh, because obviously we're going to have different levels of enthusiasm, uh, for and so on. Uh, and we want to give them time to, you know, we want to ease into this during this coming year so they have a chance to test it out, to use it, to get, you know, so we can get the feedback and say, okay, we thought this was going to be good, maybe it's not, right? So we have a chance to, to be flexible, as, as Mr. Wilson said, so that when we hit that year two, we start to introduce it to the students and show them how to use it and educate them on the pitfalls. And then as you said, AI is basically just a ton of averages and it thinks this is. But we start to teach the kids critical thinking and so on, how to recognize that those averages don't seem right or how to check those averages and, and so on. But we don't want the staff to have to learn at the same time that the students are learning. So when we put the plan together, just as much as, you know, what specific tools was the timeline of, okay, we, we need to move, right? And, and, you know, we're starting to move ahead now. But we also need to, you know, again, be deliberate with our intentions to make sure that our staff feels comfortable when we're, you know, getting into this new, new technology.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And finally, we have, um, Allison Waldo, she spoke to us, uh, from her team. That was great stories here tonight, Mr. White Bonus, uh, about, uh, attendance, regular attendance.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
I have to lower this a little bit because they're all tall and I'm pretty short. Um, okay. So yeah, so I'm Ally Waldo. I'm the middle school assistant principal. Um, so for this final priority challenge, regular attendance was brought up again. Um, as Dr. Oberga stated, right, we're still kind of in that COVID fallout. So we have definitely seen gains in our attendance, but it still remains to be something that we want to continue to improve upon. Um, so for our goal statement with the team, I worked with Mark Bonus and Brady Soy. We came up with the idea of splitting it up into two goals. So one for the elementary level and one for the secondary level, um, for two reasons. So one reason is that the data was different, of course. And two, because whenever we look ahead into those action steps, they're going to look a lot different for an elementary student versus senior, right? So that's why we wanted to make sure that we had some specific goals for each of the levels. But okay, so the first measurable goal statement for our elementary schools is that we would like to increase average attendance percentage across all elementary grade levels at Joe Walker and Claysville Elementary to eighty-nine percent. Now I want to talk about that number and where we got that number from. So right now, we don't have the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four attendance data. Um, if you're unaware of that, and the reason why isn't because of us, it's because of just the way it works. That data will not be given to us until October of this year. But, um, Dr. Gauthrin actually kind of develops and comes up with kind of a projected percentage. So for, um, both of the, the elementary schools actually was eighty-six percent. It was even for both of them. So that's why we started with the one percent gains for each year. So we figured that that was definitely attainable. They are well over where they should be, so that's really great. So we just figured, let's just keep it going. Um, so for that first year, we definitely want to reach eighty-seven, the second eighty-eight. And then finally, for target three, we want to reach eighty-nine percent. Um, how we're going to do that is by using proactive strategies, including early identification of barriers, targeted interventions, family engagement and partnerships with community resources. Um, and with all of that being said, the first year, what we really talked about was sitting down and figuring out what do we do already? Because we already do so much. Ms. Kelly Painter, she's our attendance coordinator. She's fantastic. She does a lot for us within the district. Um, we also have a lot of tier-two supports that we meet these needs with attendance. But kind of just, what do we do? How can we make it better and going on from there? And then for the next slide, so this is for secondary specifically. So their baseline data, it was the same again for middle and high school. Not sure how, but it just happened to be that way. And that was seventy-two percent. So it was a little bit lower. Um, and so for this one, we decided to increase it two-point-three percent every year. So looking at a larger increase because we want to reach specifically seventy-eight-point-one because that is the golden number that we want to reach to say that we have attained attendance for where we should be in this, in our state here. Um, so again, I don't want to read this again, but it's pretty much the same here with the same goal statement, the same targets, other than just the numbers being different. And then of course, as we go on with this plan, those action steps, like I said, will look a little different for the secondary level. So yeah, so attendance was definitely a little bit shorter there. But do you have any questions or anything that you're concerned about?
I have one.
Yes.
What was it you said that the middle school high school is currently at?
So we are currently at, it was seventy-two percent. Yes, that's the baseline for what we project for twenty-three, twenty-four. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Always like a year behind.
Yes, yes.
Um, this is the same question I ask every time that we talk about attendance, but, um, where does the cyber school, where do the mixed fiber kids come into play? Because they got Joe Walker, we got Claysville, we got middle school, we got high school. But, and I, I guess that there's, um, we don't have a lot of resources to fully develop that. But attendance is an issue in mixed fiber. And we all know, studies have shown that attendance also is a direct, um, influencer of student success, correct? So I, I ask every time we talk about attendance, so I'm going to ask again. Are we planning on incorporating that into our kind of schools at some point?
So I think.
No, no, I mean, you're the mixed fiber person, so you can go ahead.
So at this point, um, we have all considered our mixed fiber students to still be part of whichever building they would have attended in person.
So those numbers will.
So those numbers are part of, like when we say the projected eighty-six percent or projected seventy-two percent, that includes mixed fiber students that was a bit in that building. I can tell you at the elementary, there are very few as a factor currently. Um, at the high school, there are a good bit more, like we're close to forty high school students. So it's, it's a good point and maybe it's worth exploring. Should we treat mixed fiber students, at least for the high school, as its own cohort, have its own attendance data? Um, at this point, that's not, what we've done, they're still being accounted for in the goal because of them being considered like, uh, these high school students. But we, we certainly have the, the tools or the capability that we could track specifically what's the attendance rate of our mixed fiber students. We definitely have the, the capability to do that, so.
And, and something we do plan to do that we've talked about is having surveys. So meaning giving surveys to parents and guardians as well as even maybe some of our secondary level students um, to kind of figure out who's, who maybe isn't coming to school and maybe the why part of it too. So that could maybe tie into the mixed fiber as well and maybe hopefully get some of them to maybe come to school too physically.
Now that I know that the numbers are going to be included, if we don't address the attendance issues in the mixed fiber, that's going to pull down, uh, what you could accomplish, um, in totality, so.
And I know, um, as Waldo mentioned, um, here, I know one of the payers challenges is that sometimes when a, in the building student is having some attendant concerns, um, they, the family sometimes will say, well, can we go online? I'm having trouble getting them to the building. Can they go online? And mixed back, sometimes there are kids that will go online and they, they do. They basically, you know, participate and turn that attendance in. Um, sometimes we see the, the same struggle just move from in-person to online attendance. So it's, um, and I think it just depends on the, the kid and the situation, but.
And probably the biggest factor too is remember, attendance was different for a student that attends a mixed fiber classroom. Their, their virtual, it's their time. Um, and it's different from the way we record it, but to see, that's dependent on how it looks.
All the more reason why to talk about it differently.
Hey, I'm sorry. Any other questions for Ally?
No.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Last little bit and then I promise we. All right, last little bit, and then I promise we were done. So with anything else, so you probably didn't notice this in the slide, there's still two sections left in their goal plan, and that is the way in which we're going to communicate each of our goals based on the four-party challenges. So there's a communication plan that we still have to button up, uh, as Natalie Teemo talked about when we're going to do that next. And then the second thing is, some of our strategies, and it was clear when you saw this, requires professional development. So we have to be very intentional in AI, certainly they require a lot of professional development and making sure everyone feels comfortable with those tools. So those are the two things that are still what's left, and then what's next? So here's what's next, starting today, you can go onto our website, under the admin tab, and you will see our comprehensive plan posted there. We, uh, are required to have it for twenty-eight days, public view, so that by the next time we come together, which will be Thursday, March twentieth, it'll actually be twenty-nine days, uh, the community will have time to look at this. Uh, I will, we're going to put a banner up on our website to direct people there. Uh, I'm going to have a Facebook post tomorrow describing where to go. There's already a news feed on our website telling you where to go. So we've already started to communicate this, but that's a big part of the plan is making sure that we're communicating this. Um, as I said, our next admin meeting, uh, where we're going to come together and tighten up this plan, it takes some of the feedback we even heard tonight, uh, is going to be March twentieth, with the hope, I'm sorry, March fifth, with the hope of the board adopting this, um, March twentieth. And that puts us well within the timeline. We're required, again, by, by our education, to have our plan due to state by thirty-first of March, which will be well under that, that plan. And this is why I was referring to Mrs. Lepard, for you, future forecasting now. Um, one of the things we've never done in the past, but we started to talk about this on the admin team, was, as I said at the very beginning, if we're not checking the plan from year to year, saying, okay, as you heard, there's year two goals and then year three goals. If we're not adjusting them, if we're not adjusting them to the information we're getting back, we're not doing a good enough job. It's not, it's really just sitting on a shelf somewhere, probably, the plan is. So sometime in mid-spring of next year, we're going to bring back the entire steer committee and do just that. Look at year one, what did we say we're going to accomplish? What were the goals that we set? What were the strategies to accomplish those goals? Moving from there, and I'll, I promise to feature, moving from there, then we'll go and look at the next year's goals and do the exact same thing. So that's the final piece that I have there. And then finally, I, I have to do this one more time, because this was, this is a process, as you can tell. This is not just something you just kind of throw together. This has been a process since November of last year. I am very thankful to the men and women behind me. I'm very thankful to the steer committee, the teachers, the community members, the parents, board member, that were part of this, because whether they volunteered their time or the case of administrators, they made time in their day, any means, that was a huge ask. But I believe the time commitment that we all put together has created a very solid plan. So again, I was supposed to say thank you to all those groups and make it known. Any questions?
The timeline, just so that I'm, we're all set.
Yep.
Fine tuning between now and March twentieth. So at the committee meeting on March twentieth, we do give, uh, not the whole thing, but maybe if there's any changes, highlight any changes since the.
Yes, absolutely. The, the, the plan though, as you see, the, the, the nuts and bolts, the meat and potatoes is not going to change. It's just ways in which maybe we're going to communicate some professional development, certainly.
Thank you. I have one question as well. Um, let's say we adopt this and six months down the road, we decide this isn't going the way we wanted it. Is it amendable?
So the plan itself is something that the state has requirements for, it's more of a requirement, and I'm not going to get, uh, to, to answer your question, absolutely, because that's exactly what we did with the last plan.
Okay.
And remember from, from the year two, the year three last, a year ago, we made that presentation, this is what we're changing. So this, this does not work if we just say, let's put it in stone, let's ship off the PDE, let them approve it, and then say we're good. Because especially with AI, as, as Mr. McKee and Mr. Wilson said, even right now, as we stand here, probably thinking of things that, or having thought of things, I'm sort of, I'm here. I'm following things that are going to be coming our, our way, both for students and for teachers. So we've got to, we've got to be able to do that.
And maybe just for clarification for everybody, it's not like the state ever comes back and, and looks at whether you've accomplished your goals. They, you have to submit the plan to them. The internal is really where you look at, did we accomplish the goals, what do we need to change? That's all, the state requires it, but they require just more of a, a way for you by which to guide through your changes, so.
Right.
Okay, I'll, I'll stay here, I'm just going to, anything else?
Thank you. Great job, everybody, thank you all.
As we wait for, uh, Mrs. Alberschalk, I think, uh, would like to congratulate her on her recent marriage. One from Miss Beddellion and Mrs. Alberschalk.
I still can't get used to the name. Oh, yeah, absolutely. All right, so I'm going to talk again today about the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. I'm going to give a recap of where we are for twenty-four, twenty-five. Some of this is going to be repetitive from our last session, so I'm going to go through it a little bit quickly. Current twenty-four, twenty-five budget comparisons, this is on the revenue side. We budgeted thirty, almost thirty-five million. As of January thirty-first, and all of these numbers are as of January thirty-first, we're sitting at about seventy-five percent of that as receivables, so twenty-five point eight million dollars. That is, um, basically made up of our investment money, which we only had three hundred thousand dollars in the budget, but with the interest rates fluctuating so much, we, I was kind of keeping track of where we were. So we're almost at that three hundred thousand, so we're going to surpass that for this year, so I'm glad about that. Our delinquent taxes, we budgeted four hundred and thirty-one thousand, we're at three hundred and twenty-one thousand, so it's seventy-four percent collected. Our taxes levy, these are our school taxes, we budgeted thirteen point four, we actually collected twelve point five. Since the twenty-twenty-four calendar year has ended, everything that has not been paid has been turned over to the Washington Tax Claim Bureau, that is now delinquent taxes. So if that money comes in, it'll be put into that delinquent tax pot, so you're aware. And then our state basic and special education subsidies, I just wanted to highlight these. Um, we budgeted thirteen point seven, we're at six point two. We will get the thirteen, I'm not worried about that. They typically send us about two million dollars every other month, and we are scheduled to get about two million next week, so we're right on track there. For the expenditures, we budgeted just under thirty-six million. As of January thirty-first, we had spent just under twenty million, um, using almost fifty-five percent of the budget, and we are about sixty percent into the year, fiscal year, so I'm pleased with our progress there. Now to talk about the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, I just want to briefly go over the timeline again. Um, the deadline for homeowners to file a homestead application is by the end of March, and there were some questions from the community about they did not receive one, and that is probably because their application has already been approved. Those are approved for three years at a time. So every three years, you should be receiving one.
If somebody who hasn't had one previously, or they don't have one, how could they get one?
They can always call either the Tax Claim Bureau, or they can call the school and we can research it for you. In the March, by the March meeting, I want to have a preliminary budget proposal, um, because we, we need to move pretty quickly between March and June to get it all finalized. In April, the state will release the property tax relief reserve amount, that's the state allocation for the whole state, and then by May, the Department of Education will tell each individual school district what their farmstead, homestead, property tax relief amount is. We take that amount and, um, offer it to our approved applicants to reduce their tax obligations. And then in the May meeting, I want to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed version of the final budget. That will still be a proposed version, that has to be available for the public to view for at least twenty days. And then in the June meeting, adopt the final budget so that we can have that to the state by the July fifteenth deadline. Just again, quickly, some of the expenditure considerations and concerns for twenty-five, twenty-six. Our piecer's contributions are going up ever so slightly, but because our salaries are contractually increasing every year too, that does add to that, um, piecer's increase. Our healthcare is through ASIC. ASIC is estimating a nine percent increase again this year in healthcare costs. Um, last year, we spent three point six million dollars on healthcare, and that was the district's responsibility, not including what the employees put in as their premiums. And then the year before that was three point four million. So those are ever so slightly going to be increasing again. Um, and again, almost every year, our salaries increase by three percent. So looking at twenty-four, twenty-five's budget compared to this, that would mean about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars increase in salaries across the board. And just so you're aware, we do employ about two hundred and seventy to two hundred and eighty people, and that's all of our employees, full-time, part-time, coaches, subs, um, our tax collectors, everybody that is receiving a paycheck, uh, in some capacity from McGuffey's is about two hundred and eighty people. So our anticipated expenditures for twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, our salary, like I said, increasing to about fourteen point six. And I want to say, these are very broad overview amounts right now. Um, any of you that are familiar with any type of accounting software, there are hundreds of different accounting expenditure codes. When I rolled them over to, from twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six, there are eight thousand at McGuffey's. Some of them, obviously, we don't use because they're year-specific, but being the way I am, I want to go line by line through all of them for the past couple of years to see what we had budgeted, where we ended up that actual year, and look at what I really need to budget for those, um, expenditures moving forward to twenty-four, twenty-six. I just want it clean, and that's the easiest way for me to do it, is each one individually. So salaries, we all, we all know what salaries are, benefits, that's the things like the piecers and the health costs, the purchased professional services category, all of these. So it is a little bit confusing, but it's what it indicates. The purchased professional services, our, our contractors for things, um, like occupational therapists that we don't have, and we contract that out, so that's that category. Our property services, these are services that help maintain all of our properties, all of our buildings, so anything maintenance-related. Other purchased services, this is our busing contracts, our cyber school tuition, our charter school tuition, that's all in there. I think everybody knows what supplies are, we have to have supplies to help keep the place running. The property is actually leases that we have with companies. So this is our printers, our copiers, and our postage machines. Other objects dues and fees, these are just the dues that we all pay for our professional organizations, any fees that we have to make, pay for any type of professional development, we categorize as other objects. And then our other financing uses, that's our bond issue, and that is the actual number that we will be paying for twenty-five, twenty-six. Did I? I probably stepped on it. There we go. So we're anticipating a little under thirty-seven million in expenses, like a broad overview right now. I'm cleaning up. Um, some revenue considerations for twenty-five, twenty-six. So the PA still releases till early December, they have given us preliminary amounts, haven't changed it really at all from last year, I'm not, I'm not anticipating a big increase in revenue from subsidies. It's actually decreased from last year, so that is a loss of almost two hundred thousand dollars right off of the bat. The Act One index, again, just as a reminder, we can go up to fourteen point six two mils. Um, that would increase our revenue by about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over last year. And then again, less federal funds expected due to the expiration of all the CARES and ESER funds. So our anticipated revenue, looking at local revenue, this is all of our tax, so this is school taxes, delinquent taxes, our, um, local income taxes that we get. Well, I'm looking at fourteen point four million dollars of anticipated revenue there. Our state revenue, and that's all of our basic ed, special ed, the, uh, career technology subsidies, all of those subsidies wrapped into this, we're looking at eighteen point nine million. Federal revenue, we're really now only receiving title money, um, and a little bit of our Medicaid access funds, so we're looking at only four hundred and sixty thousand there, for a total revenue of just under thirty-four million. So the outlook doesn't look great right now, expenditures at thirty-seven, revenue at thirty-four, so we're looking at a three million dollar deficit. I don't want you to panic right now, because I, I still have a lot of work to do. Um, I don't have all of the building budgets yet, so we're working on them, and I'm going to clean, clean, clean as much as I can to get this to a place that I'm happy with. Just as, um, some information for you, the millage rate increase impact, like I said, if we do nothing, we're going to lose almost two hundred thousand dollars in revenue. If we increase only by one percent, we're still losing money compared to last year, about seventy-five thousand. The two percent increase would net us about fifty-six thousand more and so on, up to the five percent increase, which would get us about four hundred and fifty thousand, and as you heard me say, our salary increases are probably four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, so that's just going to barely cover our salary increases. This is where we stand right now with our current reserves, our fund budget. This is after year twenty-twenty-three, because our auditors are still processing and finalizing our audit right now for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, I do anticipate gaining a little bit of, of unassigned revenue after the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, but I won't know final numbers until they have everything back to me. What is important on this slide is the unassigned, because we can use that to fill the gap of a deficit in our budget. We cannot use the unassigned, the non-spendable and the assigned. The unassigned, right now sits at about six point eight percent of our proposed budget. The state tells us, if our unassigned reserves is less than eight percent, we can go up to the full Act One index that they have recommended. So just keep that in mind. Next steps, I'm still working with the budget managers, building principals, administrators, so we're going to finalize that. I'm cleaning, 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 that's really what I've been doing all week. Um, and then I'm going to continue to monitor the state budget and see where our actual allocations come in and subsidies come in. Any questions? Yes.
Do you have reassessment every year of the property?
They're constantly doing assessment appeals, and they don't go out and assess everybody every year, but there's a lot of appeals. Um, what has caused us to lose money this year in assessed property values has been coal depletion.
We basically lost twenty-four million dollars worth of assessed value.
Fourteen million, fourteen.
Fourteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a comment, I say this every year, uh, and since there are more people sitting in their seats tonight, I'm going to say it again, and that is, um, call your local reps.
Yep.
Because there are two areas in which we could really use help. One is, it would help us a lot if the state would pass their budget before we have to pass ours. It's really hard to pass a budget.
Yep.
When you're guessing at what the state is going to give you or not give you. Um, and they never, you guys know, you watch the news, their budget is never done until months after schools are required to have their budgets approved and into the state.
The other area.
Inconsistency.
The other area that would be helpful to, um, lobby for is the cyber reform that Governor Shapiro has proposed, that right now, the school districts are responsible for paying any of the cyber or charter school costs that students that live within our district attend. For a regular education student, we pay a cyber school a little over fifteen thousand dollars. For a special education student, we pay a cyber school over thirty-five thousand dollars per student per year. Those costs are costing you, the taxpayers, one point two million dollars.
And they are consistently over one million dollars for us.
His proposal.
One point five, one point six.
His proposal is to make an eight thousand dollar across the board for regular education students. The school would have to pay the charter school or cyber school eight thousand dollars per regular ed student. The special education would be a little higher than that, they'll have a formula that would determine the amount, so I can't give you, uh, an actual figure, but it's going to be a lot less than the thirty-five thousand per student we're paying now.
Does the state have a current date that they're supposed to?
Does the state have a current date that they're supposed to have a budget passed and just don't? I'm just curious, is it somewhere that they just keep?
Their fiscal, July? Yeah, yeah.
June thirty is when the state is supposed to have it.
But it's never, yeah.
So I also would say, start replacing the representatives that aren't doing what we're telling them to do.
Yep, absolutely.
Run for office.
But I'm serious, contact your local reps, call them, email them, go visit them. Yes, yes.
Do we, I don't expect you to answer this now, but do we track our assessed value from year to year to see if it's gone up, down?
Oh, yeah, I have it for a number, I have it for a number of years, yes.
Do we get any explanation of what the fourteen million was for?
Well, yes.
Based down on a percentage basis or line items?
Yeah, they send us what they call a corrected assessed value report, and I can look at that report and see what township that property is. It gives me the property ID, it gives me the address, and it gives me the reason why. And a lot of our loss is because of the coal depletion, yes.
If you could get that number force of a percentage of what the coal depletion is.
Oh, yeah, I have it.
Overall would be very helpful.
Yep.
Because I think it's probably significant.
Oh, it's significant, yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That will close committee at seven-thirty. Let's reconvene for our regular school board meeting at seven forty.
It is now seven forty-one. I'd like to call to order the regular school board meeting of the McGuffey School District. Roll call, please.
Present.
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 Here.
Here. You did the roll call. Pledge of Allegiance, please. As we stand for the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to take a moment and for any McGuffey alumni that has passed this past month since we left last, and just take ten seconds to reflect and get our heads straight, and if you need to pray, please pray at this time.
Dear heaven, my father, we thank you for this time that we can be here together, and we ask for your presence here, that you will guide us in all of our decisions. We give you all the praise and the glory in Jesus' name we pray.
Father God in heaven, I do thank you for the opportunity to just come to you in prayer when we need, when we see fit. I do ask that you be with the families of those who have lost loved ones since the last time that we met. Father, help them look to you for their strength and their guidance, and if they don't know you, Father, please put people in their path who can bring them to you. We thank you always for your presence. We know that you're always there. The question is, are we there listening? So we ask for open hearts and open minds. In Jesus' name we pray.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies.
Yep. Just wanted to make an announcement that we did hold executive session prior to discuss bail and litigation. Need a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Michelle Leibhardt as Board Director.
Second.
Discussion. I would like to pass along a message from Ms. Leibhardt that she had asked me to pass along to the public. She has asked me to relay that unfortunately, due to her health, she has had to resign from the board. It was her pleasure to serve for the last three years. I think I can speak for the majority of the board when we say we wish her the very best in her recovery, and that we will miss her, and she did a great service to the McGuffey School District.
Absolutely.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas. Uh, Mr. Thomas, go ahead. Um, we're beyond that at this point. I apologize.
He's been sitting there.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. Leisure.
I guess a question that it might even be to this listener, but Mrs. Leibhardt was the vice president. Do we need to hold elections now, or do we not hold them until we get another board member?
We are required to hold elections immediately because vice president, you have a president. Vice president would serve when the vice president couldn't. So you don't need to hold that until you've appointed a new member. And I think the next topic of conversation would be how this board would like to appoint that member.
So we still have to vote. Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, we still need to vote on.
Well, if something would happen to Mr. Kern between now and next month, this board would just elect a temporary president. That's all.
Any more discussion before we vote on the resignation, and then we will discuss what we're going to, how we're going to fill it moving forward. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stand? Was that a?
Regretfully.
Motion carries. Moving forward, we as a board will have to make the decision collectively as a whole as how we want to move forward with filling the vacancy. It is my recommendation, and I'm open to suggestions as well, but it's my resignation that, oh, my suggestion, sorry, that we solicit from Morse Township and South Franklin Township, anyone that would be interested into it into filling her seat for the rest of this year, that they inform us in writing to the school board no later than March fifteenth.
What's that? Would be the understanding that we would then hold public interviews at the March twentieth meeting?
That's really up to us, if that's how we want to.
Is that part of your recommendation? Because that would be mine.
Okay. If we do that, my suggestion would be let's have a set of questions that we ask each one. Like, if it be one question, it could be two questions.
That's the way it's been done in the past. You have to do it that way.
Yeah. Unless we only get one, then, yeah.
And then following those, somebody would make a recommendation or a motion as to who to fill that seat, and the board would take an official vote in public, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, everything is done in public. Yeah. Everything would be done in public.
And by in writing via email? Doesn't have to be USPS? You want both? Does it matter?
I think email is fine.
And should that go to the board president and the solicitor? Just the board president and the superintendent? What's the recommendation? Generally, they would go to either the superintendent or the board secretary. They would have them fold them. Doctor Oberg and Mrs. Seibert.
Amy, if I could, remind me the other options that we have: the interviewing in public, the letter.
So it's completely up to the board how you want to fill your vacancy. If somebody had somebody in mind, and you didn't want to solicit letters of interest, you didn't have to. I always recommend at least soliciting letters of interest, and then it's up to you if you want to bring back everyone, if there's only a few candidates you'd want to bring back. And then you can have them, you don't have to bring anyone back at all. You can determine based on their written letter of interest that you want to take that person, or you can bring them in for interviews, or you can bring them in and let them speak for a set amount of time, you know, three minutes, five minutes, and tell you why that they would make a good McGuffey School Board Director. That's an option as well.
You could do a combination. Could you not have them come back and give them two or three minutes and then also interview?
You can, but it depends how many you bring back, because you don't want to be here till midnight.
Typically, we've not had a large pool of people who.
True, but that's a concern.
Submit a letter of interest.
You do have. I would just say that I'm of, and everybody who knows me knows this, I believe in full transparency. I think the most transparency to do is to solicit letters of interest and to have them attend the next meeting, and regardless of whether we want to interview or whatever, and then do the then publicly. That's my. I would just like to note, and Mrs. Kern just asked me this, we have thirty days to fill that seat. If we fail to fill that seat within thirty days, people can go to the court and ask the court to fill the seat. Most recently, that was done in West Monah County. The judge then put out an advertisement. He got letters of interest, and he fixed. So that's what would happen if, and it doesn't.
But the next meeting is twenty-nine days away, correct?
Correct. So just so you all know, that doesn't, if no one files the petition, you still would have time to fill the seat. But I just want to let you know, you are on a thirty-day timeline. And Mrs. Seibert and I counted the days, so we knew that we were okay.
So Jason, you said by the fifteenth?
Correct, yeah.
Time to look at them before the next meeting.
Well, we would, they would be forwarded to us by the board secretary, yeah.
How do we plan on soliciting, and what?
It would be my recommendation to advertise it on the website for that. I think word of mouth goes around too, but I would recommend we put it on the website. Would we need to put it in the paper as well?
You don't need to put it in the paper. Honestly, I think website and your social media probably gets more circulation than your local paper does anymore, and it's a lot less expensive.
Yes.
That's true, too. You do have a nice cost associated with.
I would like to. Thank you.
Do we need an official motion then?
Before we move on, any other on that, on how the process will go? All right.
Mr. President, I understand the process. We've done it a couple times
Yes.
in the past. Mr. Schreiber was one of the people that we were on the board. I'm just a little concerned that if we only have twenty-nine days, if we don't come to a decision that night, it poses a problem, so.
It can, yes. If somebody files a petition two days later, yes.
I'm just a little weary of the timeline. You could very four-four vote, and we could get nowhere, unfortunately. So I guess if it's a first, we have to take.
If somebody files the petition, and then in the interim courts of how that that's, it makes that petition moot, if people are able to fill the seat, you would still be able to fill the seat, but I would prefer you fill the seat.
So we're asking people to solicit till the fifteenth.
Correct.
And we will do everything public on the twentieth.
That is correct.
Patient, and they didn't solicit in writing with, I'm just curious, if somebody didn't know about it till last minute and decided to throw their hat in the ring. That makes sense.
I don't know, but if the way you said by the fifteenth, that to me says that's your date.
Correct, and if they haven't submitted a letter of interest by then.
Putting it everywhere we're supposed to, and if you're interested, it's the fifteenth. If we don't have it by the fifteenth, then you could still run. I mean, you could still be on the ballot to fill that slot, but.
Right.
As far as that, according to what he said, that's what it sounds like to me.
I just wanted to make sure I understood completely.
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Board secretary and the superintendent.
Maybe just we're on the same page. The board can appoint somebody that seats for the remainder of the term. That term ends November of this year. So if there is after that, then it would be filled by whoever wants the election. So if there is somebody who's interested in running, I believe the petition deadline is March ninth?
Eleven.
March, a lot with eleventh. Could be, but it's early March.
Yeah.
Do consider getting your name on the primary ballot for May and then run through the election. But those are two separate processes. Just that we're all clear on that.
And to further clarify, although the petition would be voted on in November, the appointee will serve till that first Monday, Tuesday of December?
The original meeting in December.
Right, till December first.
That person would not serve, yeah, December first, and I believe I put out that in March, that's what our motion will say you will serve.
Right, right, right. Just to clarify for the community, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a feeling we probably won't get a large amount of people, but if we do, how do we go to limit them down when we have them at this meeting at the same time? I mean, do we need to do something before the meeting?
I don't think we can do anything before the meeting, can we? Everything has to be public.
We can have a special meeting.
You guys can decide you want to take the top three, the top five. Who you invite back is up to you. You would want to say that, like, kind of now, though, like, we want to bring in, you know. I think the question would be more like, what would be the criteria to determine the top three or the top five?
Right, true that, right.
We won't have time to bring them back because we're going to accept them at the same meeting. That's what I'm concerned is.
Well, Mr. Thomas had a question as well.
We wouldn't have been voting because. Now, what you could do, well, the fifteenth, you could see how many you get. And if you get a lot, you could do a virtual special meeting with twenty-four hours advertisement and hold a special meeting to decide who you wanted to bring back.
So we had to figure out who we want to be at the next meeting, basically. I think the last, I know the last time we did it, I think we only had two candidates.
Well, I know for a fact that when my mother was seated that same way, she was the only one.
If I could ask too, when emails are received, will they be held till the fifteenth and then distributed to the board, or will you be forwarding them as they come in?
I would suggest you put them together in a packet, and then you email out that packet to each board member, because the last thing you want to do is miss one. It's piece mail.
Right.
Good?
Right.
All right. Moving on to middle school student of the month, and I'm going to ask this. Ally Waldo will come up with for our middle school student of the month.
Okay, it's me again. All right, so yeah, I'm just going to show you the video. Hi, I'm Ms. Boyle, and I'm the assistant principal here at McGuffey Middle School. It is my honor to introduce our student of the month for February, Ms. Leona Caref-Long. I'd like to begin by sharing a few words from Mr. Roberts, who nominated Leona for this special recognition. He said, "Leona comes to us every day and gives one hundred percent effort. She stays on task, is quietly focused, and often volunteers to questions. Though she's a polite student, her dedication and engagement excite roots. She's been an exemplary student all year, and truly recognized each month for consistently doing her best. Leona, we are so proud of you and your commitment to excellence, and you've definitely earned this recognition, and we couldn't be more thrilled to celebrate you." All right, so now on to some questions that we have prepared. So the first one, so tell us, what is your name, your grade, and what are you involved in at school?
My name is Leona. I'm in eighth grade, and I'm in the MTHS.
Awesome. What do you like to do outside of school? Any hobbies, sports, any other activities?
I play piano, and I like camping, and I can swim.
What does being student of the month mean to you?
Student of the month just means being on task, doing as told, and also like maintaining grades, and, yeah.
What is your favorite subject in life?
Probably ELA, because that's what I love.
Do you enjoy the reading part of it or the writing part of it, or both? Do you have a favorite book? Do you read anything when you're studying? The gentleman, do you know Alfred Van Assen? Yeah, awesome. Okay, last question. Advice would you give to other students who do not the month in the future?
Basically, just do what your, like, lunch teacher tells you, pay attention, don't be involved, learn your own time.
Oh, awesome. Well, thank you so much, Leona. We're so proud of you. Keep up the great work. We're going to miss you for sure next year, but in high school, I hope everything goes well. Keep up the good work. We know you're going to do great. So be sure to congratulate her today, and, all right, bye. All right, so without further ado.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, but a quick question. Do we give the pen to kill it? Yes.
I will email that, yeah.
Next is a high school student council representative.
Hi, Maeve. Good evening. My name is Maeve Catula, and on behalf of student council, I will be reading some school updates. The National Honor Society is sponsoring a blood drive on February twenty-sixth. Our Mink Olympiad is scheduled for February twenty-eighth, with teams from Trinity and Washington High Schools attending this event. McGuffey Winter Guard will be hosting a competition this Saturday afternoon at one o'clock. Eighteen teams will be competing. The sophomore class will be hosting a madness pickleball tournament next month, their resource period. This year's drama production, A Guys and Dolls, will take place March sixth through the ninth. The high school marching band and choir are projected to walk the world April eighth through the thirteenth. Here are some sport updates. We had a great winter sports season. The winter sports teams qualified for the Whipple playoffs. Fourth basketball hosted a playoff game for only the second time in school history. Our wrestlers won the section title and finished third in the Whipple Team Wrestling Tournament and qualified for the state team tournament. Many winter milestones. Aiden Cunningham and Taylor Schumacher scored ocean basketball careers. Far and Emmett Wuff won their one-hundredth wrestling match, and Reece Teagarden can win his one-hundredth tomorrow at the Whipple tournament. We are advancing ten wrestlers to Whipple Individual Championship, the most for any double-A school. Rifle qualified for the team playoff and finished second in the section. Finally, for the first time, to the best of my knowledge, we had a cheerleader designated with the first-team All-American status by Infinity Cheerleading Organization Nina Henderson. Lot of individual wrestling to still be determined the next few weeks, so stay tuned. Don't throw away your seat cushions as the spring sports team look to also be strong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maeve. At this time, we will take public comment on agenda items. Chief. Mr. President, call Casey McFarland, South Franklin Township. Thank you, chief.
Hi, everyone. Casey McFarland, South Franklin. I'm just going to be extremely, I wanted to just give a public thank you and gratitude to Michelle for all the time that she served on the board. I know I haven't been attending quite as long as she's served here, but for all the time that I have been here, she has been extremely kind and welcoming, so I just want to give another public shout-out to all the time that you served for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vicki Jordan, Township. I would also like to ask everybody to keep praying during this difficult time. I'm curious why J one on the agenda, transportation for to Waynesboro that started on November thirteenth, is on the agenda three later. Was it an oversight, or did it slip through the cracks? Also, where I'm going with this, there was a lot of talk about surveys, and surveys for the parents. So why are we talking about coaches, athletic directors? I'm going to continue to push it every time it's on the agenda. And then lastly, with all due respect, I would like to request the board to call a second executive session and allow me to speak on possible litigation. I'm trying to be respectful, but if you deny my request, I'll just speak on it publicly, and we can let the chips fall where they may. But I feel it's an important matter that I would prefer to share because it is possible litigation in an executive session meeting. So you guys let me know what you want to do.
I make a motion that we grant her request. Second.
You can make a motion to go into executive session at any time, so is that, is it a motion to go into?
Yes, I make a motion that we go into executive session at the request of Mrs. Jordan to discuss potential litigation.
And Ms. Frye seconded that.
Yes.
Discussion?
Now.
It would be now.
I'll be free for everybody now. I'll be free. Because I know you all want to get out of here. Robin's going out.
Miss Seibert, roll call vote, please. And this is to adjourn to executive session.
Ms. Frye?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Leisure?
Yes.
Mr. Leibhardt, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Shangle?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Renata?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes. We will adjourn to executive session at eight oh seven PM. It is now eight seventeen. We will reconvene the, uh, meeting. The board, after hearing the topic, did not hold an executive session because they thought it was not litigation. Um, Ms. Jordan, you still do have four minutes and thirty-eight seconds left if you would like the podium.
I am going to hold it till morning.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just note that time, in case I might.
Chief, anyone else?
That concludes all of this, President. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five school board meeting as submitted.
So, move.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, Ms. Frye.
In regards to last month, with, with the consensus voting that we did. I understand, but it was on the minutes. And it, it was in the minutes, I should say, but it's not in the written minutes, and I think it should be. It's not in the minutes because it wasn't a vote, correct?
It, it wouldn't appear in the minutes because the minutes reflect official board action on official board business. That was how the board wants to organize its agenda, I believe, and that's not board business. I mean, it, it's how you organize yourselves, which is based on board consensus. You had a vote, you had, or you had a discussion, you had a consensus. I, there was no real vote taken on it.
So, be, as long as, I think I'm understanding this correctly, the, the minutes aren't necessarily a reflection of everything that takes place at the meeting. It's just a summation of the business that was, was completed at the meeting. Is that correct? That is correct. Okay. It was with adding the agenda items, moving things around, things like that, um, changing the names. No, it's okay. What? No. Oh. Yes, it is. At the end of our, no, we had two. Wait, 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 wait. Cause now we're on to something else. Yes, that, and then board comments. What? I thought that was. Is that the same thing?
I thought it was the same thing.
I did not know that that was the same thing. I thought that was for like that unresolved business. Board comments aren't necessarily, like we talked about it, it could be happy birthday to somebody, or, Mr. President, you did something I didn't like, or whatever. Like last month. I, I understood, cause I thought that could cover both. I don't think it does. I think that could be used against board members whenever they do want to make a comment and somebody says, this isn't continued discussion, we didn't talk about it before, or something like that. Not saying it will, I'm just saying it could.
Monique, what, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Pr- what is the second item that you wanted on the agenda? I, I didn't hear you.
It's okay. There were two items that we, we pulled a consensus for, and it was board comments and then the unresolved business, or unresolved, whatever they decided to word it. But then, now we're hearing it consolidated to items for continued discussion. But I don't see that as the same thing. I see continued discussion as something we've talked about before, but we need to keep talking about it, not necessarily board comments.
Maybe we could have a consensus at the end of the meeting again to have it on for next month. Those are two things.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't know why we should have to. We had a consensus last month, and we've had a consensus of other things that haven't happened.
I agree with you.
I, I said we'd discuss it when we get to that point.
I suppose, yeah, yeah. I think the minutes I get confused about because when I compare to a township business, uh, business meeting that they have, or, you know, even other school districts, honestly, I've seen where there's comments that are, they're placed whenever comments are made. And, and it is, it is, I'm sure, left to the discretion of the secretary. Sure. What was voted on, what was done, not what was said. Sure.
And I think, I've seen those things too.
Mm-hmm.
But I think the board, the individual board, each board decides, and our board is decided, and this is what she's doing. You know, that's what they're saying. Like the township, they decide what they want on there, and some other schools, they decide how they're going to do.
Right, right. That's the purpose of the conversation. It, it was a consensus vote for board govern, not board governance, but for setting the agenda, not setting the agenda either, whatever you would call that. And so I thought it was supposed to be on there or should have been on there.
I think it would conflict even more the misunderstanding of vote versus consensus. The, the agenda is a reflection of the action that was taken on business that votes. Um, I think if you leave it at that, we can talk about other things, obviously, but when we take like a straw poll, which is what a consensus is, um, that's not business, and I think it would just create more confusion to add it to the agenda.
Okay.
To the minutes.
To the minutes.
What did I say?
We're still back though on the, on the agenda item, just approving the minutes.
Right.
I mean, we can discuss that when we get it down to that agenda item. Um, but is there any further discussion on the agenda item?
No.
Sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Anybody abstaining?
I oppose.
Okay, one opposed? Policy committing meetings minutes are attached for your review. Need a motion to approve the general fund schedule of bills from January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. That is, that should be twenty-twenty-five? Yep, twenty-twenty-five to February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. Check number eight zero three two four to check number eight zero four eight five in the amount of five hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and seventy cents as submitted.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the food service schedule of bills dated February twentieth?
I would really appreciate it if we would not make a motion till after he's read all of the information.
I agree with that. I know you don't mind, Mr. President, but the public listening, the communities here.
Where'd I leave off? Date of February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, check number seven seven eight six to check number seven seven eight seven in the amount of fifty thousand ninety dollars and sixty-nine cents as submitted. We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of January twenty-twenty-five as submitted.
So, move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the G O B series twenty-twenty-one bill list dated February twen- uh, February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, check number two one zero five nine to check number two one zero six zero in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-three cents as submitted.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the spring sling dance fundraiser to be held on Friday, April fourth, twenty-twenty-five in the middle school gym.
So, move.
With, discussion? Any further discussion?
Thank you, Dr. Welk.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the girls on run as a school activity at McGuffey Middle School for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at no cost to the district.
So, move.
Discussion?
I just have a question. I know there's Girls on the Run, and then there was Kids of Steel. Girls on the Run used to be elementary. Is elementary now, Kids of Steel, and middle school, Girls on the Run, or is it being offered?
This is, this, so this program is being offered to a middle school. We do have a Girls on the Run, I believe, at Clayzel that has us wrong, and Kids of Steel at, at.
Jo-Walk. Okay.
But they're all finished programs, just keep going, and then they ultimately end up, uh, competing in a park.
Right. I think they're great. My daughter participated in them. I was just curious where was what, because I just think they're awesome. Thank you. That was it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve members of the McGuffey High School Career Technical Program, Local Advisory Committee, and the Occupational Advisory Committees for General Agriculture, Agriculture, Canization, and Engineering Technology Programs for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So, move. Second.
There was any further time to stop me early, Mr. Laser, that was it. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Want to abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-four, twenty-twenty-five, number three, providing for the appointment of Ms. Charlene Aubertchok and deputized Keystone Collections Group to collect real estate taxes for the McGuffey School District for properties located in Blaine Township as authorized by twenty-four P S six oh one of the Pennsylvania Public School Code until the next election.
So, move. Don't move.
Discussion?
To clarify, um, for the community and, and for myself, to be sure, this is a position that we are appointing only because it is vacant, and if somebody chooses to run and fill the position, that would supersede this appointment, and that elected official would take over the responsibilities.
Correct.
Okay. And it, I know it, it said since twenty twenty-one. Do we know when that, did that person resign in twenty twenty-one? Or were they elected in twenty twenty-one and then later resigned? And it's just been vacant since twenty twenty-one? Okay, thank you.
If I understand this correctly, we've been doing this for the last couple of years, but we have to do it because we have a new business manager, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's changed every time, like with Mrs. Todd, and then when she left, it was Mrs. Engelmann, and now it's your turn.
Would this have to be reappointed when the term is up? Or this is it till somebody, I guess I didn't think of that question till just now. Will you serve the position since we appointed you? Just indefinitely until somebody runs for the position and, and wins the election? Okay.
And if nobody runs, then you maintain it.
Correct, okay, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to hire Alex Frye as special education teacher at master step one, prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, current assignment, McGuffey Middle School, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verifications.
Don't move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Dr. Welk?
Youngstown State for his undergrad, um, and he got his masters of education and special education from Grand Canyon University. Uh, Mr. Frye's been with us for the last two, uh, years and places as an emergency substitute, and, and as well as a building staff. He's worked his way through his, um, educational experience while, uh, getting on the job experience here, and he's done a fabulous job in the middle school. Uh, so we'd like to, at this time, uh, welcome Mr. Frye to the team.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name's Alex Frye. I really, uh, just wanna say thank you. I'm really appreciative of the opportunity, and look to, excited to get this started and continue, uh, building the relationships in the school, um, and get after it. So, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Alex. Need a motion to hire Renee Bailey as a special education teacher at master step eight, prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, current assignment, Claysville Elementary, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verifications.
Don't move. Second.
Discussion?
Um, this, for, for both of these positions, I guess, I didn't even think about, about it for the last, but then, both, both of these positions are being, um, salaries coming from that access funding, is that correct? Not both, just this one. Okay, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Uh, Ms. Bailey is not here tonight, but if she's listening, welcome to McGuffey. Need a motion to extend the director of athletics contract of Mr. Edward Dalton through the twenty-five, twenty-six school year per the terms and conditions of the current agreement between McGuffey School District and Ed Dalton.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Renee Cambruzy and John Lazer to chaperone and attend with students to the Pennsylvania F F A State Leadership Conference on March twenty-third through the twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania.
Don't move.
Discussion?
Yes. There's always, um, the question for clarity on, on the funding, and I was trying to even look back on what the answer was to how this worked, and I couldn't find it. Would, would somebody be able to clarify again that the, where the funding comes from?
So this particular funding is built into their budget. They have a budget for professional development, for conferences, for travel, as do all departments in the district. So they have budgeted for that on a yearly basis.
And why do we have to approve this versus when other departments? Athletics, for instance, you know? Yes, the subs, I understand, but, um-
Yep.
We attend confer- I mean, we approve, like, when, when guidance-
Plus, they're gonna-
Our administration goes, guidance goes to P P I and training, or whatever, we approve those conferences, correct?
Yes, you have, unless there was a conference, which I think there was one recently where there was actually no cost to the district. Um, but to, to just further answer your question, uh, in regards to that, again, if it's budgeted, um, sometimes those, uh, budgeted items are not, not necessary for athletics. Like, if they're gonna go to a, a competition, that's actually already budgeted for.
That's budgeted for, yeah.
Right.
Right.
And, but what we've done, and it's been protocol since before I was here, is to make sure that you know, knowing as you approve that budget, right, and you're gonna have it here, uh, very soon, but we want you to know how that money's being spent, so that's why I was here for you tonight.
Right. So with, I think this might be where the mucky water is. With this budget, is any of this their funds that they've been earning through? I think that might be where-
So the subsidy money, so the subsidy money just goes into the general budget? It's not really set aside to go back towards their department. It goes into our general state funds subsidies that we're receiving to pay, sorry, to pay any bills that we have.
So none of this is like their fundraising that they've done? This is simply budgeted from their budget from the district? Okay, yes. I appreciate it.
The fundraising for different, um, groups, it actually goes to a different account, correct?
Yes, yes, they're separate.
Right. I think the confusion is it, it's-
I understand, like, what is general fund budget, and what is their student activity budget?
Yes, yes. At least for me, that's what I was trying to find clarification on. And I knew there was an answer before, and I did try to find it, so thank you for clarifying again.
Any further discussion, Mr. Lazer?
Certainly. Um, you sent us an email out. I requested at the last meeting that we find out what type of funding they've received reimbursement based upon what their cost is. And if I remember correctly, it was like seventy-five percent would get reimbursed for their particular program. So that would mean that we're only paying twenty-five percent of the whole entire ID program?
It's, yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Both are.
Mm-hmm.
And that doesn't happen to any other program, right?
Yes. Their basic education funding and basic special ed funding.
Thank you.
One of the same, special ed, yeah.
Any further discussion?
I think, Monique, if it helps, Mrs. Frye, if it helps, cost to the district, to me, means that it's coming out of the general fund, coming out of the, the school's budget.
Yeah.
And we're coming from the student activities fund, we wouldn't have to approve that, first of all.
Right.
And it wouldn't be worded as cost to the district.
Right.
If that helps.
I, it does, and sometimes they say, like, part of it at no cost to the district, and then other parts of it, it is cost to the district. And I just think that because it's not consistent with every time it's brought-
Cause they're all different.
Yeah, so I just, again, I just wanted to make sure I understood, so thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Mrs. Charlene Hobert- Hobertchak to attend the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Official Conference on March eleventh to fourteenth, twenty twenty-five in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, at no cost to the district. This professional development conference will be funded through Title II funds.
Don't move. Second.
Discussion?
That's a clarification based on the last conversation. This has to be approved because she'd be missing days from work, correct? Correct?
Correct.
So even though there's no cost to us, she won't be here, and that's what we're technically approving. Am I understanding that correctly?
It's, so, again, part of this is procedural. This is also part of her responsibility.
Right. Correct. Right, totally agree. I just am trying to make sure that we're all understand. Working, but not in the building. Correct.
And that's the reason it comes to us for approval, so.
So, it's no cost to the district because the Title II funds are being spent, and the board has to approve spending Title II funds, is why it's there.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favors, whoops, sorry, Mr. Lazer, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? I'll abstain, Miss Seibert. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Mrs. Amy Guske to attend the N T S A National Conference on Science Education on March twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
Second.
Discussion?
We got it now.
Got it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the sabbatical leave of a Claysville Elementary teacher as requested for the remainder of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Don't move. Second.
Discussion?
I do have a question. So how is a medical sabbatical leave different from an F M L A?
So the medical sabbatical, they do get half of their salary while they're on a medical sabbatical.
An F M L A, they would not?
F M L A, they do not get paid. We do, still continue to pay for their health care under F M L A.
And they're, they have the opportunity for a medical sabbatical leave under their contract?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Just to make sure-
It's in their contract.
F M L A, we would not be required to vote?
No.
Now, with a medical sabbatical, is it, do they have to use up all their other time before using it? Just like you would for an F M L A?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's verbiage in the contract that if they do not return, that they have to repay what we paid them while they were on the medical sabbatical.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Gage Bloom as an additional substitute custodian, retroactive the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Elizabeth Sprouts as an emergency day-to-day substitute teacher and para educator for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all clearances and Act one sixty-eight verifications.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to hire the following list of twenty twenty-five spring sports assistant coaches per the terms and conditions of the agreement between McGuffey Board of Directors and McGuffey Education Association, pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight verifications. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
What was yours?
Could we take into consideration the parental surveys, or even student surveys, for how things are going with their coaches? Or the assistant coaches, the head coaches, um, when it co- you know, you hear from a select few that may have some complaints, but wouldn't it be reassuring if we knew the majority is happy with, with whatever is happening in those departments?
I, I'm just gonna ask, not, did I don't think that's a conversation we shouldn't have, but I'm wondering if that should be saved for items for continued discussion, because it doesn't really relate to these specific coaches being hired at this moment. It's sort of like a point of order, I guess. I don't know.
I, I, I would agree with Miss Jackson. Let's discuss it at, at the end of continued business, and, um, or unfinished business, however that is worded, at the end there, Miss Frye. Um, continued discussion. So, can we save it for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the spring coaches? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five transportation contract with Tiffany Pyvick as submitted.
Don't move. Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Um, why are we contracting with an individual? Rather than like a company, or?
Might go to answer, or you?
I mean, whoever could answer, um, a parent sits, she's transporting her student to another school because they need the intermediate unit one services in Lanesburg?
Which isn't necessarily unusual. Cause it's sometimes cheaper to pay that parent than to-
Right.
Than to contract it.
Is there a reason why we're, it's just now coming up on the agenda? Because this is from November until currently?
It's actually till the end of this year.
Right, but I mean, it, you know, currently now is when it brought up. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And I did misspeak. I didn't mean it was up right now. I just meant now it's on the agenda.
I'm just making sure you do.
Yes, thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, number four, authorizing twenty-five, twenty-six intermediate unit one general operational budget as presented.
Don't move.
Did we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, um, I, I try to compare things from year to year, and I was looking at last year's. And I was curious if, if ever there's a conversation when these are created, cause I know it's created, I believe it's our superintendents that attend those, that, um, input on, on their agen- not agendas, their budgets that they present to the rest of the districts to approve. Um, do we know why, oh, yes. Okay. 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 Yes, yes, okay.
Now, we have at times in the past had the opportunity for members of our board to participate on that board. We just haven't had anybody who's chosen to do so in a while.
Right.
But that would be our avenue of input.
And their, our board members would be voted on there, right? Maybe I'm confused with something else.
Yeah, they wrote it on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
They would.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right. That's what we attended last year, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Lane was the last person from McGuffey to be on that board.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Any further discussion?
Yes, um, I ha- I did have some questions. So, how can we find out, and maybe this is more for, um, for Miss Hobertchak? Got it right first.
It makes a nightmare, isn't it?
Her would be. Um, like I said, I was comparing, and do we know why the care and the upkeep of the ground this year- grounds this year was twenty six hundred dollars, but last year it was sixty two thousand four hundred and ten dollars? Now, I know McGuffey doesn't pay that total, but if you're, the lot, the itemized line items that they were giving us and what we are contributing to. I, I think why it was fluctuating, so, I mean, we, twenty six hundred this year for upkeep of grounds, but sixty two thousand last year.
I would imagine they purchased equipment if I had to guess.
Could've been.
Or we individually could contact them, correct? I think I just looked at the overall, it's a decrease this year.
Oh, yeah, I see that too.
And of all of the things that we've had increases.
I see that too. But, I mean, a decrease is great, but, I mean, we still, I'm still looking at everything that we're contributing to as a whole as well, um. Right. Right, I was just curious. Um, and then do we know if, and, and maybe this, um, Amy, maybe you could answer this one, if we know why the legal services were more this year than last year and if any of them had anything to do with McGuffey? And I, I, I understand that that might be something can't be answered out here.
You're probably not gonna be able to get that information, cause it's gonna be their, their.
Their executive content.
Their executive content as well.
But if it were, if it had anything to do with McGuffey.
We would know.
We would know. Okay. Um, um, okay, this one is more for Ms. Hobert Chalk. Our estimated contribute, contribution last year was twenty thousand three hundred and five and two cents. How much did we actually contribute? Cause I know it, we did contribute all of that, cause I know it men- mentioned an estimate based on whatever data they're using. Okay. Um, has it ever been over that you know of? Okay. Okay, that was all of my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's a roll call, cause it's a budget. I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Seibert.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, you're welcome, thank you. I need a motion to approve payment to Andrew and price invoice dated January thirty first, twenty twenty five in the amount of five thousand one hundred dollars as submitted.
Second. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, um, last month it was asked that the board got a redacted version of that line item, um, but we did not get that. Is it in the works or will we be receiving that?
So, so I just wanna be clear, because there is student information on that redacted and there is also teacher staff information. So in the past, if that was ever wanted to be looked at by a board member, we asked you to come on campus to see the redacted.
Which is what I thought we had said last month. I don't recall being told we were gonna get a redacted version. We, I remember somebody asking about, could we get a retra- retracted version, redacted version, excuse me, but the conversation was that if somebody wanted to see it, they could make arrangements to come and see it.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Well, but that's what's there now. I mean, that, that, that's what's there now, I'm not sure, like what we give you now.
Is the redacted version.
Instead of this, the student, they'll have the, the dollar amount, they'll say personally, you know, just use that.
Sure, sure. Right.
Like with finances, if you wanna go to see finances to some company, you have to come in, make a year, you have to come in and see. Well, for example, when we put the budget out for public review, um, if they wanna see it, they need to come to the school. And so that's just standard.
I guess so, okay.
I think we can discuss it further in items for continued discussion.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carries. Dr. Ober, the facilities use report. Thank you. The budget expenditure report is there for your review. Cafeteria report for the month of January twenty twenty five is presented for your review. Bless you. You're welcome. The P car spending report for the month of January twenty twenty five is presented for your review. Madam Solicitor, do we have a solicitor's report?
Solicitor has no report, Ms. President.
Thank you. Western area career technology center report, Ms. Frye.
I do not have anything, um, since last month's meeting, our next meeting is next week on Wednesday. Um, I encourage the community to come and, um, see the facility, um, come to the meetings, meet the other board members, uh, the director. The, um, weekly updates are there for your viewing, um, I really enjoy reading those and sharing those. I hope you guys enjoy seeing them and reading them about all of the good things that are going on there. Um, and that, that'll be all.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. The Pennsylvania School Board Association report, Ms. Shingle.
I just have a couple of things and these really are, uh, big ticket items. The Ethics Act, how to stay out of the papers, the way they're advertising that. It is available, it's at the facility in Mechanicsburg on April the fourteenth. And the other one, this is also at the facility, the spring legal roundup. Uh, it actually is a virtual review of all the legal aspects and events that are taking place in it we should be aware of. And it's on April the fourth. Both of those are at the facility. I'm supposed to remind everybody about those little ten-minute webinars. They are really action-packed, there's a lot on there and they're real easy to do. They only take ten minutes. That's really all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shingle. Now, we were entertaining public comment on non-agenda items.
Actually.
It's non-agenda or agenda items, my apologies.
That's after.
That's after. Yep. Chief, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chief.
I'm sorry.
Nope, you're good.
This is President Cole. Casey McFarland?
Thank you, Chief.
Hi, everyone, Casey McFarland, South Franklin, um, thank you again for the chance to speak. Um, I wanted to really thank Dr. Ober about his presentation with everything that McGuffey District has been putting together with that plan for the mission, for the vision, how to obtain those things, and I think it really applies to what I wanna speak on today. Um, so the school board is brought together as stewards of public education, ensuring that every student has access to high-quality, equitable learning environment. This responsibility comes, um, with an essential expectation, and that is that we must set aside our own personal agendas, beliefs and biases in order to serve a greater good for our schools. Um, this board does not exist to push individual viewpoints or advance personal interests. Our role is to make decisions that reflect the needs of all students and families, uh, not just those who share our own backgrounds, values or perspectives. So what this means is we must remain objective. Our decisions should be based on research, expert recommendations and community needs, not personal convictions. We must be inclusive. Every student has the right to feel safe and valued in their learning environment. That means we must ensure policies are equitable and free from discrimination. We must listen. Our job is to serve the entire community, not just those who agree with us. We must listen to parents, educators and students, considering multiple perspectives before making decisions. And we must hold ourselves accountable and that includes these meetings, because they are open to the public, they're open to the entire district. And if we find our personal biases creeping into our decision-making, we must recognize that, challenge that and refocus on what's fair and right for all of the students. And I know that's definitely difficult to do. Um, I work in the mental health field. It, it's something I need to do every single day. I'm showing up neutrally without bias to each of my clients. Everybody has different views and that's a perfectly fine and normal thing. It's actually a great thing. It's what makes the community come together and work together and make things work together. We find compromise and we meet in the middle on things so that everybody is feeling involved. So I just want to encourage that to be, um, continued and to be of value of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McFarland. Chief. Uh, call Robin Crowe, Blaine Township. Thank you, Chief.
Hello, Robin Crowe, Blaine Township. I'm here in support of public, your public prayer before your meetings. I believe with the prayer, with God's presence, it will give peace and calmness to your meetings, that you will be able to do what's good for the children and, in my case, grandchildren now in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Jessica Peel, thank you, Chief.
Hi, good evening, Jessica Peel, Claysville Borough, again, coming with a deposit that I see in our community and our school district. Um, I wanted to thank our FRCP committee, um, for all of their hard work. Um, I was very thankful for the opportunity to be included in that committee. It's wonderful, um, all of the things that we learn and to be a part of that wonderful process. Um, our Bachi team had their last home game on February eleventh. Um, it was wonderful to see how excited the players were to have, uh, a sport that they were able to participate in. Um, it was wonderful to see the amount of staff and students that showed up to support our brand new sport, uh, here at McGuffey School District. Um, I'm excited to see what our Bachi team continues to do and grow over the years to come. Um, I realized after I left last month that I forgot to say when our McOlympics, um, was going to be taking place. Um, it is, uh, actually next week, February twenty eighth. Um, again, I encourage you to come, it's a wonderful day. Um, if you can only come for a brief time, I would suggest the, um, opening ceremonies, um, it's where they get to showcase all of the kids from all of the different schools. Um, it's, it's a great time. I promise.
Did it say next week?
It's next week, February twenty eighth. Um, I unfortunately, I'm going to miss it, again with, um, our monitoring, uh, like we were talking earlier, we have our special ed monitoring coming up. Um, we've been working, uh, very diligently over the last few weeks. If you see me running around, I look a little lost or I'm talking to myself, uh, because I'm a little, going a little, uh, stir crazy. Uh, Mr. Seibert and myself have been gathering all of the documents along with, and I would like to, uh, thank some of our teachers, um, Mrs. Bywalski, Mrs. Osko and Mrs. Crushhour, they've been helping us gather those documents as well. Um, and I also wanted to thank, um, our CTE teachers for all of the time and work they dedicate towards our, uh, school and students. Uh, my oldest son, who is going to be graduating this year, took the majority of the, uh, classes that they offer. Uh, my youngest is going to be going in the ninth grade, he looks forward to those classes through his high school years as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Peel, what time does the McOlympics opening ceremonies on the twenty eighth?
I believe it's around nine, but I can find out the exact opening ceremonies.
Thank you.
But that's, that's always my favorite time of the day. Perfect.
Thank you. Is it, I think I saw it on the Facebook page too, wasn't it?
I think they shared something, maybe the middle school shared, um, looking for volunteers, maybe?
That might've been it, okay. I just remembered seeing it and sharing it. Okay, thank you.
Chief. Uh, Shannon Dorsey, Donnigle Township. Thanks, Chief.
Say Donnigle? Donnigle? What's Finley?
Uh, he's Finley and Donnigle, but, um, Donnigle, so. Uh, Shannon Dorsey, Donnigle Township. And I wasn't gonna speak tonight, I really wasn't, but, um, something really upset me. I am here for the prayer, I'm sorry. Public prayer is not a bad thing. It, um, I wasn't gonna say anything at all until the pastor was dismissed. That was very rude, if, um, if anything, there is no, nothing being forced on our children. If you are against prayer in your own home, that is your own personal thing, that if, that I was under the understanding that a consensus would be taken to dismiss this and that was not taken to dismiss prayer from here. You people are, are making rules, making, doing things for our, our children, you're not forcing the prayer on our children. You're asking God to come here and help you to make those decisions in the best need of our children. I don't think that that is a bad thing. If I don't agree with something, I leave the room. If I don't wanna hear a prayer, I leave the room. If there's a problem with it, then leave the room and you come back. I am so against taking prayer out of anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three more to go, Mr. President. Thank you, Vicky Jordan.
Good evening, Vicky Jordan, Buffalo Township. Uh, you all know where I stand on prayer, so I'm gonna move on to my other matter. I did ask to adjourn for executive on what I felt was possible litigation and I still feel that way. And the reason I do is, um, I'm, I wanted to be respectful to Dr. Ober, but here we are. So last time I called out our superintendent for changing the agenda within twenty-four hours of a board meeting and questioning whether it was a violation of the sunshine law, two things happened. One, our solicitor stated it wasn't because the title wasn't changed. I'm sorry, the content wasn't, or the title was changed, um, but the content was changed within twenty-four hours. And I didn't accept the answer then that it wasn't a violation and I still don't. The agenda was altered within hours of the board meeting and it wasn't in a small way. The entirety of the parental consent verbiage was removed. I asked the board to address this with new policy reviews and add to the district policy that no changes will be made to the agenda within twenty-four hours of the meeting and let the board decide how to proceed with any suggested changes publicly in a meeting. Since my public comment on those two things, since my public comment on that, two things have happened. First, Dr. Ober has now twice attempted to embarrass me publicly at a meeting by scolding me and once talked over me loudly that he didn't do anything wrong. I'm sorry you're upset, Dr. Ober, because I spoke on this publicly and you felt I should've called you and that was your words. This wasn't a just make a call type of infraction. This was the type of infraction that the community needed to be aware of so that we keep an eye on it moving forward. And two, the policy meeting that was advertised on our district page and in the local newspaper as the second Tuesday of each month at four o'clock was changed to five fifteen for the February meeting without notice to the public, within the twenty-four hour deadline. I know this because I reviewed our district page on Monday, February tenth at five PM and saw no changes. I showed up on Tuesday at three forty-five and no one is there. I reached out to Director Frye to find out that the meeting was changed to five fifteen. Again, there was no notice to the public within the twenty-four hour period per policy zero zero six, which was just discussed at not one, but two policy committee meetings. So now my question becomes, at what point do these policies, policy violations or sunshine law violations become? sunshine law violations become an issue for the superintendent? The solicitor can hide behind the minimus, but we have now established a pattern of these types of violations by our superintendent. So Board of Directors, I'm going to ask you, how many times will you allow him to violate our district policies and sun- sunshine laws before you reprimand him and force him to follow the policies of the district and law before this does become a legal issue? I'm fed up with these failures. Yes, everybody makes mistakes, but now it's a pattern. It was proven by the removal of public prayer from the meeting without the consent of the full board. It appears starts of legal action is what gets your attention. So I'm putting you on notice on both issues. If there are any more violations of our policies and the sunshine laws, I will seek out legal advice. I'm already in the process of consulting with an organization about filing suit over the removal of our public prayer after a year of established prayer. My goal has never been to take action against the district as this takes money away from the students, but I not, will not sit here while one community member threatens legal action and takes away the majority of the board and the district wishes to continue public prayer. And I would like to end by saying, those who deny our Lord and Savior in public, follow in the steps of Judas and Peter, is that really who you want to model yourself after? Thank you.
Thank you.
I was, I, I would like to address, um, everybody in attendance. I, Ms. Jordan, I'm very respectful to you and, and your words, um, but I just want to remind everybody that commentary should be addressed to the board as a whole, not to individual members, including the superintendent, individual staff member, nor the audience.
That is a violation of our First Amendment right.
It's in our policy.
We're on the process of changing that.
Which has not changed yet, Ms. Fry.
I understand, but our policies are to abide by the Constitution, and it is her First Amendment right.
All right. Chief. Mr. President, I'll call Chrissy Florian, East Finley Township.
Chrissy Florian, East Finley Township. First, real quick, I just want to do a shout out for my son, Hayden. He obtained a co-op position as a network technician, and he will be starting next month at his job. I'm so proud of you. Also, um, I want to say to Michelle, thank you, and I will continue to pray for you. And now, um, what has been done with the prayer is unacceptable. I hope that the situation is resolved. I do not agree with how it was, had been handled. Um, a lot of you know, unfortunately, cancer has affected mine and my children's lives more than I could ever imagined, or could have ever imagined. After a horrible cancer diagnosis to my husband, it started to make me think about life a little differently. Think about what could possibly be causing something so horrible. Today was, or that food was definitely one of my main concerns and continues to be. It is by far the most important thing that we can do throughout our day for our bodies. So my question is, why are we not making this a top priority for those, for these children every single day? Why is it, when the school actually serves decent, somewhat healthy food, that it isn't the norm? It's a step, but we need a giant leap. I can only do so much at home. Until it changes at home for others, I'm not sure it will ever work in the schools. Households need to change for their children. You follow what you're told, and what they tell you is best. As we are finding out, it's not always the right way. I think it's time for a reform, focusing on nutrition for these children because what we have in place is not working. I think the program you're in with, it isn't working. I think these schools need Doge for an overhaul. I hope there is a major change sooner than later. And before I continue, I'm going to apologize. I don't mean any disrespect on any of you, but I am absolutely sick and tired of this delay stuff and cancellation stuff. So, next thing, I'm sorry to say, but recently you have all dropped the ball on these delays and cancellations. As one of our marvelous community members has said, it's as if you're playing rock, paper, scissors. Like, which ones do we get today? There is a certain level of respect to be maintained, and I try not to step over that with all of you. But when the questions are not asked and problems go without solution, solutions, that's what gets us into this mess. To say that someone running the school board and making big decisions shouldn't be questioned is absolutely crazy. Did we not learn anything from COVID? I reserve the right to question anyone and everything, especially when it comes to the safety of my children. You've got to remember, we are paying you. There needs to be a policy for weather delays and cancellations. I know a previous school board member pushed this issue with Dr. Ober, and it ended up with no resolve. You delay for a seven degree we- weather day at 7:00 AM on January 23rd of this year, but then there's nothing for a seven degree day this past Tuesday with a wind chill of negative seven, or Wednesday when it was nine degrees at 7:00 AM. Did you figure it would just, that it would only get up to nine degrees by 9:00 AM, so just the heck with it? Make them go because a cancellation would make a bunch of people upset with you? Are you out of days? I know that definitely has pull on your decision making. You had two buses not starting and children standing outside for 40 minutes. I find that very unacceptable. Completely. I'm so upset with you guys. Um, you inconvenienced at least 60 to 100 parent, people, parents, children, and drivers that morning of January 23rd when it was just a delay. You ended up with a bus in a ditch and a late van. Just say, just stating facts here from what I've documented, and I hope that, that any backlash that you did get, you start taking it seriously. I understand that you don't want to take days away from putting a, um, but putting a makeup day in the middle of February was a little bit silly. You are absolutely inconsistent with your calls, and that's what is most frustrating. I, as a community member, have every right to question these decisions, and those trying to say I don't, I don't appreciate that. I speak up for those that remain silent due to the possible criticism. I don't care because my children come first. Our children come first. The whole reason I'm here. Also, why do these buses not have chains on their tires anymore? Is, is that not allowed? That's kind of confusing. Thank you. That would be the bus and company's need.
Chief, Mr. President, last is, um, I believe, Randy Edwards. Thank you, Chief.
Hi, Randy Edwards, Claysville. Uh, I'll keep it short. Um, I'm here for prayer, open, close. Um, I put a, a, a thing together, somebody else did, I just shared it to the community, McGuffey community. Um, we had 60 people that were totally for it, only two not, so that tells me something right there. Um, the other thing, there was 140, 149 comments, most of them were for it. There was just two people that just kept kind of fighting at people. I left it. I, I could have easily removed it. I could have hid whatever I wanted. I left it all open for everybody to have the discussion for McGuffey. Um, I'm on a few other committee, or committees. We all do open, close prayer. I don't see a problem with it. It's not harming the children. It is just asking for God to be here with us on your decisions. So, open, close, totally for. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief. Mr. President, that concludes public comment. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Now we will entertain, uh, items for continued discussion.
Well, I'm going to address the opening of the room.
Go ahead, Ms. Shingle.
Uh, what are we doing here? Because the general consensus that we did last year and we've been doing for a year was seven to two that we have the prayer, and now all of a sudden we're letting the pastor sit here for a half hour and not even, we're giving him the opportunity to get up and for an hour. So are we having a, another consensus? Or what is our plan?
Until another consensus is taken, the one, the previous one should stay.
The one should hold, correct.
Well, why would you say?
So, can, can we make a motion then to add it to next month's agenda?
I don't think we have to. It's not, it's not anything we have to vote on. At, at this point, since it's been so discussed in public, I think for transparency purposes, you should put a motion on the agenda and, and hash it out next meeting.
Chad, you made a motion, correct?
I made a motion to see if the board is willing to do it, and I would say, don't wait until whoever gets appointed to the position that way that we have a full board.
So at the March meeting?
Yes.
I second that. Mm-hmm. I second that.
So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second discussion, Mr. President. There's no agenda yet.
It's going on next month's agenda.
Next month's agenda, yeah. Further discussion on that?
I just, I want to say I agree. Um, we had a-
So we're gonna, so what we're gonna vote on right now is, correct me if I'm wrong, to add that to the next agenda. Add a motion to the next agenda.
I, I will, um, yeah, I, I understand that, but I do not understand how we can say it's a general consensus and now we're going to say it's a vote. It doesn't really matter because my vote's not changing, but, or my, um-
Consensus.
But, um-
Your view.
I don't understand why that is. We had already decided.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Shingle, I'm only saying, just for transparency purposes, you might as well just put it all out on the table and just have it in public.
I think it should be in public, but what about these past two months whenever the budget?
Are we waiting till next month to have discussion on this then at this point, or?
Yes, oh, well, it's my understanding, yes, because it's not on the agenda right now. We would put it on the agenda for March, and that's when we would discuss it and vote on it.
But technically, it doesn't-
Discussion would be any topic that's not necessarily on the agenda.
Right.
Right. You can discuss it here, but you can't vote it. You can add it to next month's agenda.
Right.
You can say that the board would like to add to next month's agenda.
So then, I-
So we're gonna-
Well, give us more time, if anything.
Whether we have the motion or not. But the only thing I would caution you with, Ms. Fry, which, you know, I respect your opinion, but, uh, as Mr. Thomas stated, when we appoint that, um, new board member, let them be part of that discussion as well before the vote. If we vote, if we discuss it now without them here, then are we just going to have to rediscover it when they are appointed?
Probably.
So the, yeah, so the motion in second is on the floor to add it to the agenda. There's no more discussion, and you can vote it.
Okay.
This, uh, we want a roll call to vote, please. Do, do we have to have a vote, or is this a consensus? I'm, I'm kind of confused.
I, I, I'm saying, because you're asking to add it to the agenda, I'm asking for you all to vote it.
Okay. Thank you.
I know that you don't want to have a discussion, but I'm, I'm confused why we would motion to have it added to the agenda. It's not a measure on which we need to make a public vote, correct? A, a vote, an actual vote. It would just be a general consensus.
Well, what I'm, there's a motion to add it to the agenda to have public comment on it. If you don't want to do that, then you don't have to, but I'm, I'm recommending that you do because it's been such an issue here. I'm recommending that you put it on the agenda and vote it, and vote on it and discuss it at the next meeting in public.
And vote, what are we voting on exactly?
What, to add prayer to the public, to the agenda.
So we're gonna take it from a general consensus to an actual business vote?
Yes.
I'm confused there.
Because you have previously told us it really wasn't part of a business, it is a general consensus and we do that.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand.
Because it was really not done correctly.
No. Right.
No. I believe that it's a common issue, and just to make, for clarity's sake and for transparency's sake, if you put it on the agenda, then everyone knows about it, you can just get it done.
It's a general consensus, but it's not on the, the agenda, it's a general consensus.
Yep, no, I, I'm gonna ask you to make it an item of business.
Right. So then here's, here's my question. I know we said we would deliberate next month, but I-
Again, the motion on the floor is to add it to the agenda for next month.
I get it.
Let's, let's just stick to that and let's roll call that vote, if that's okay, so that, just for the instance of going home sometime tonight.
I'm, this is important to me. Um, Mr. Kern, did you seek any legal counsel from Amy before making the decision you made? Did you ask her what you should do about it, or did you just take it upon yourself to eliminate it, or?
Let me answer it this way, Ms. Fry. Um, I keep hearing the word consensus and majority wants this and that, but that is your opinion. You don't know if it's the consensus that wants that anymore.
Correct.
Well, so then it should have been-
Do it again and add it to.
Yeah. That doesn't answer my question. Did you seek, did you seek legal counsel from Amy to make the decision you made?
I don't recall. I don't. I mean, that was almost two months ago.
So did you just decide out of the blue? You didn't want to do prayer last month, didn't tell anybody till right before the meeting, and we, you know, everything happened.
Ms. Fry, I'm not going to sit here and be interrogated by you. I'm not.
I'm not interrogating you. I'm trying to understand what happened because it, it means something. Because the consensus was, and we knew we had a consensus, of a seven-two vote.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You knew, you were part of those emails. We got the right to know. We know. It was a seven-two vote.
Back then, oh, a year ago.
Correct. And we had all of the same board members here at the time. Correct. Consensus, a roll call, whatever you want to call it, consensus. It's not the issue of doing it again.
If we were told already it's really not part of business, it's not a business act, and it's a general consensus, then that's what we should be doing again now. And now all of a sudden we're saying, wait a minute, now it's not, like we're sticking in juice.
But we need to wait till we have all of the board members. I agree to that point. My concern is, how come our solicitor isn't saying to our president, you can't do that? You had a consensus already.
Well, and I think the previous consensus should stand until a new consensus.
Correct. And why is our solicitor not advising that?
Well, uh, hi, um, are we going to vote? I mean, I'm-
No, I don't think we should vote this month. I think it should be on next month.
No, this is just to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Sister Leisure had something to say, I believe.
Uh, I, I, I'm trying to understand all this because it's a little confusing, but I think this is what it boils down to. What's changed from this consensus to now? The only thing I can look at, and we have a new president, and it's my understanding that the president is in charge of leading the meeting. Um, I assume that he decided to do that and that's his prerogative, but that's my understanding, but-
It was not his authority to do what he did, though.
I understand.
So next month, we reorganize.
I understand. I, I'm just trying to understand the whole consternation, I guess.
Right.
So, uh, the reason I, my, my opinion was it's consensus is because how the board organizes itself. It's consensus. However, because it's been such an issue with consent, what a consensus is and what a vote is, my recommendation is because nobody seems to understand the difference, let's just do it as a public vote. Just makes it cleaner. Zero. No, my, my legal opinion doesn't change. I think you got the letter that we wrote to whoever, I think I did, or Dr. Ober did. My legal opinion doesn't change with liability. It's just at this point, it seems that everyone is confused. So, Ms. Fry, that's, that's actually my, my legal opinion. That's why I think to eliminate the confusion, I'm just saying, let's just put it out for a public vote to eliminate the confusion. Motion's on the floor.
Right.
Are you roll calling that?
Yes.
And just, so that, because I'm, there's been a lot of discussion, what exactly is the motion?
Motion is to add it to the agenda next meeting.
To add-
The prayer.
Going on public prayer at the meeting, making it-
To the agenda.
District business. And therefore make it, yeah, district business. Okay.
And only for the sake of transparency and because it's a hot button item?
I'm-
I'm, I'm conflicted, I'll be honest with you, because I don't feel it's public business. I understand, um, what you're saying. So I, I think that as long as it's clearly worded, that we're doing this as a business vote simply for transparency and that's clearly worded on the agenda and in the motion, I don't have a problem with that, is that okay? So I'm gonna say yes with that caveat. Do we need to change the motion in some way? Okay.
The same thing as Mrs. Jackson said, for transparency only and it'll be on the agenda.
If you would allow me to craft the motion, it, it'll say that.
I think it should be as public anyway, so that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Banana? Ms. Fry?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Barman?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes. Any additional items for continued discussion?
Mr. Leisure.
Mr. Leisure, go ahead.
I was the one who questioned about the slippers report last month, um. I think the, the board deserves the right to have a redacted version with, uh, line items stating what they're actually for, just so we have a better understanding. I don't care to see any names of any administrators, staff, or students. It's just a little better explanation of what the line item's for because of the codes that are on the invoice that we see, I have no idea what they're for. But that was my concern, that's all. And if you don't, if you don't- Well, for an example, last invoice had personnel listed twice. So I don't, I would just like a brief explanation of staff, student, whatever it is. No names, I just would like to understand.
Can I ask for clarification because I, I know what our bills look like? So we send a summary sheet, which is what I think you all get. That's each matter number, so when we bill, when I bill to my billing at McGuffey is twenty-five thousand, general non-retainer is twenty-five thousand point one, general retainer is twenty-five thousand point zero, and then it continues. I think I'm up to like one sixty-two with matter numbers here at McGuffey.
And I'll just say, for clarification, that's not money.
The number is twenty-five thousand, that's what McGuffey's number is in our system, but we-
You provide the board with that, whatever the numbers are, what they're for, then we would know.
Oh, okay. If that's what you'd like, we're concerned, well, redacted is a little bit different. I could also, we also have our itemized bill, which sometimes can be pretty thick and you're asking Dr. Oberg or Laura to take their time and cross out people's names and that, I think that was the confusion of what you wanted, you want the matter number.
The only thing that I would ask is if you could give us what the matter number is and the description of that matter number. I could care less about anything else.
I, I can prepare that, I can prepare that.
I think it makes it easier for everybody.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying, because that, that's what we wanted to know. Like, redacted means a couple different things.
Something different, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more, one more thing was, um, the coaches, um, using surveys to, parent, parent surveys, student surveys, when it comes to either evaluations or rehires or renewing even, I don't know what you would call it, but maybe it isn't fifty-fifty then, maybe it really is only a couple people. I mean, that's, I think that's part of why we want to find, why we want the information, because- I guess my question would be though about whether, whether we can, is that part of governance? Um, because the evaluation process is done by the athletic director. Um, and I don't know, um, maybe you have a, a better, a better explanation. Can the board dictate in what way he fulfills that part of his contractual obligation?
You, you really can't, um, I mean, honestly, that's what public participation at a board meeting is for, is for people to give feedback to the board about items on their agenda, such as coaches and things like that. Generally, your athletic director here at McGuffey reviews your coaches and then your athletic director shares that with the superintendent and he shares that with, with you all when you're gonna renew a coach, so. And don't forget that supplemental positions in a lot of cases are filled by bargaining unit members. You've caught, you have collective bargaining agreement issues as well.
Well, I mean, that's, they're, they've basically said that the items for continued discussion was for board comments, but I didn't understand it to be the same thing. Um, I think it should be two separate. I, I'm fine with the items for continued discussion swapping that out for that unresolved business that we talked about last month, but I still think we should have something, a specific line for board comments. I don't know.
I, I was actually thinking the same thing.
I mean, we're only at, what, letter B and we still have till Z to go? I don't know. Yeah. Yes, they could, yes.
We've had it in the past.
What was that, I'm sorry, I missed it.
We, we've had board members in the past during public comment go up to the podium and comment.
Or even sit in the chamber and still be timed.
Yeah, because you're a resident, so you're entitled to that time as well.
I don't, for, I, for me, items for continued discussion would cover both of them. Continued means it started somewhere. So to me, it doesn't mean it's a new board comment. It's something that we either, well, discussed earlier in the night or a month ago, or- Therefore, it would be continued from earlier in the night. Right, tonight at work, but I'm saying board comment is you have something new to say.
I think, I mean, I-
I think we're splitting hairs.
I think we are, um. I don't think it would, the items for continued discussion, I, I agree with Mr. Leisure, you can make it items for continued discussion slash board comments. Or a board member can use a lot of time to get up at the podium or sit in your seat and be timed during discussion. I mean, I don't think we're trying to silence anyone by any means.
No, I'm not accusing that at all. I'm not accusing, I just didn't understand it to mean both, like, like we had talked about and the consensus on last month.
I would just like to ask if we could come to consensus on line items, continued discussion slash board comments. Be added to the agenda for next month.
Items for discussion.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that cover it?
Well, yeah. I think we will, I don't know that we need, can't we just take out the word continued if that's the word that you really find unacceptable? Items for discussion.
I think either, either way's fine, I just, yeah.
Honestly, I am too, I just was confused because, like I-
Would everybody be okay with, sorry, Ms. Fry?
No, it's okay.
Would everybody be okay with just taking the word continued out and items for discussions?
I am, that would be fine for me.
Done, all right. Um, I have something, um, next board meeting when we have to appoint, um, a du- a, a new board member. One thing that we do need to discuss is if we have multiple, um, community members that are interested in it, how we're gonna go about, um, giving them either a question or a time. It is my recommendation that, um, I'll, I'll-
I would recommend that we utilize committee time for that.
All right, I, I, just let me finish, please.
Oh, I thought you were finished, I'm sorry. You trailed off, I thought you were done.
No, that's okay, Ms. Jackson. Um, I am recommending that we give each, I'll call them candidate, each candidate two minutes up at the podium, uh, just to tell us why they want to become a McGuffey school board member. But we limit it to two minutes because if you get ten or fifteen people, you don't want to be here for seven minutes each for each one.
Are we gonna ask them questions?
Well, what I'm suggesting is instead of asking them questions, just let them go to the podium for two minutes and tell us why they want to be a, a school board member.
I like how that, I think that's more organic.
Yeah.
And, yes, I know, and I liked it because it was perfect. Um, yes, I think, I think that I would prefer that over a specific question or two.
Mr. President, so that would mean they would speak for two minutes and we would decide what ones that we want to speak further?
No, no, they just get two minutes and then, yep, then we vote. Then somebody would make a motion and I make a motion to appoint so-and-so.
Thank you.
So basically, we're not going to quote-unquote eliminate anybody. We're just gonna let everybody come for us, two minutes to speak, tell us why you want to do it or why you fit the position.
Right, they still have to submit a letter, I mean, not a letter, but in writing, five to fifteen.
I'm sorry, if you clarified, I missed it. Is that during committee meeting or during the public meeting?
During public, correct. At committee, at committee.
At committee.
All right, we'll do it at committee. Ms. Iver, we'll, we'll do that at committee. So we'll let them speak at committee and then we'll vote on it at the meeting.
That's typically how it's done, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
If, if the board-
Hey, um, can we hold, uh, one second, go ahead, Ms. Fry.
Um, I was just gonna say, if the board did decide to reorganize at that time, what, does that have to be?
You cannot, you're asking me to remove the president? You cannot remove a president without a, you can't reorganize in the middle of a year? So you can't re, or do you mean vote for vice president?
No, I meant reorganize.
Yeah, you can't remove a president without, there's been a court cases come down recently that they have a louder mill right, you'd have to have a hearing.
Can you share that court case with me, please, or the board?
Sure, certainly, I, I think it's, it's not Pencrest, Penhurst? But I'll send, I'll send it out.
Okay. I'm asking if, if somebody were to motion to reorganize. Mm-hmm, right.
I thought seeing the, the vice-
Not getting rid of them, he would still be on the board. Because that's a vacant position. Right, anyways, um, it was just a what-if question. If somebody were to motion to reorganize, how would that work? Because I was under the understanding that it could happen at any time of the year, but that's been clarified.
Yes, you have to, you would have to remove the president if you wanted to reorganize.
Okay, but not remove them as a board member, remove them from-
No, you, there's very, very, very limited ways to remove a board member. It affects three eighteen of the school code, it's incredibly complicated. You can, you cannot remove a sitting officer without a hearing.
Ah, that's, okay, that's what I was confused about, okay. Um, I had one more question, but I don't remember what it was, so I apologize. If I remember by next month, you'll hear from me.
Um, well, can I take this one, you want me to? Okay, I, um, well, you would make a mo- somebody would have to motion for a candidate. Like, for instance, I would have to say, I make a motion for so-and-so to become a board member to take Michelle Livehart's place, then that person would need a second. But then another board member can make a motion for another candidate.
And it's, that works the same way, so you would have then the most current-
So for every candidate that has a motion and then a second, they will be the ones who we would eventually vote on.
And we would roll call.
Yep.
And count, and, and just so you all know, the person who you pick has to have five votes. So I'll be over here doing the thing.
Right, kind of like we did at reorg- like we do at reorganization.
Exactly.
Where you open nominations.
Like, uh, to be elected, I mean, to be appointed, they have to have five votes.
It has to go by five, right. So you can't, it can't be a plurality, is what I'm saying, you can't have like one, one, one. Four-four will not pass, right, right.
Right. I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.